Good evening, everybody. We're going to call the meeting to order. A roll call, please.
The record will reflect that all members of council are present.
Mr. City Attorney, is there a closed session report?
There's no closed session report this evening.
Now, please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Councilmember Petros. And please remain standing for the invocation afterwards.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father and God, we, your servants, come before you tonight, humbly asking for your divine guidance, for your compassion, and for your wisdom as we endeavor to properly and justly govern our city. Bless all who live in our great community. In your name we pray. Amen. It gives me great pleasure to welcome back to the DS Councilmember Daigle. And let me just invite her to make perhaps a few comments.
Well, thank you, Mayor. First, I'm very pleased to be here. In fact, I'm very pleased to be seen upright on this side of the grass. I got punished pretty badly in a bicycle accident last month in Irvine. It happened on a trail. It was a head-on, bike-on-bike accident. And I appreciate everyone's good wishes for my recovery, especially for my colleagues. We've been serving together, so long together, for the betterment of our community and the betterment of the citizens of Newport Beach. So, thank you, and I hope to turn this into a positive, re-energized effort by the community to achieve a higher level of bicycle safety. Thank you.
Thank you. Wyatt Robertson, are you present? Please come forward. We're going to today recognize once again one of the really outstanding young people in Newport Beach. And it gives me great pleasure to read this proclamation for Wyatt as he comes forward, and then we'll make a presentation. Let Wyatt say a few words here in a moment. Whereas Wyatt Robertson is a senior at Newport Harbor High School and is being recognized by the Orange County Safe Schools Task Force; and whereas Wyatt is the president of the Newport Harbor High School Association Student Body and a student representative to the Newport Mesa Unified School District Board of Education; and whereas Wyatt is co-president of the National Honor Society at Newport Harbor High School; and whereas Wyatt received the Presidential Brown and Silver Certificates in recognition of his hundreds of hours of community service with organizations such as the Environmental Nature Center, Meals on Wheels, and the National League of Young Men; and whereas Wyatt is a summer intern for the Illumination Foundation, providing tutoring and mentorship to children living in transitional housing. Now, I therefore, Keith Curry, Mayor of the City of Newport Beach, on behalf of the entire Newport Beach City Council, do hereby recognize Wyatt Robertson for his accomplishments in academics and for his commitment to serving the community. Wyatt, congratulations.[188.73][188.73](APPLAUSE). Would you like to say a few words?
Yes. Thank you, Mr. Curry. It's just a complete honor to be recognized by Newport Beach, and I hope to continue giving back for the rest of my life.
Well, thank you very much. And again, Wyatt, you're a great example to all of us and to everybody in the community. We're all very, very proud of what you do. Let's go take a picture. Okay. Notice to the public.
The city provides a yellow sign-in card to assist in the preparation of the minutes. The completion of the card is not required in order to address the city council. If the optional sign-in card has been completed, it should be placed in the box provided at the podium. The City Council of the City of Newport Beach welcomes and encourages community participation. Public comments are generally limited to three minutes per person to allow everyone to speak. Written comments are encouraged as well. The City Council has a discretion to extend or shorten the time limit on agenda or non-agenda items. As a courtesy, please turn cell phones off or set them in the silent mode. Now is the time for city council announcements or matters which council members would like placed on our future agenda.
Thank you. Councilmember Gardner.
Yes, this will be of interest to everyone who surfs or swims in our ocean. Members of the city's fire, police, and recreation departments have formed a Black Ball Working Group to review surfing regulations for our city beaches. They will be looking at all parts of the regulations, including specific areas, dates, and times. The current rules have been in place for almost two decades, and it's time to review them and solicit input from the community to see if they are working, if the timeframe and hours are still appropriate, and if these are the correct areas to regulate. The Working Group will hold a community forum on Monday, October 21st, at 6:00 PM in the community room here at the Civic Center. If this is a topic of interest to you, please attend to let us hear your opinions and let your friends know if they want to come. Any recommendations for change will be brought to the Parks, Beaches, and Recreation Commission before being presented to the city council. For more information, www.nuitportbeachca.gov/BlackBall, or you can email your comments to blackball@nuitportbeachca.gov. Second, we have a harbor commission that is working on a concept plan for lower castaways. But I'm asking the city manager to bring back for consideration for the council to see if they would like to put it on the agenda, a plan to open it inexpensively for paddleboards and kayaks and bicycles prior to the concept plan. So, if you would do that for the next meeting, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Petros.
Uh, Mayor Curry. Two brief announcements. I regularly swim out at Big Corona on Sunday mornings with a large group of friends from Newport. And I am regularly saddened by the condition of Big Corona Beach as I come back in from my swim, from the revelry of Saturday nights. The beach is regularly littered with refuse. But there was a glimmer that I want to just make all of us aware of. As I was walking up to the showers, I noticed a large group of young people wearing similar shirts starting to march towards the beach, all with big bags. And these young people all started to pick the trash up off the beach on a Sunday morning. When I approached them to ask what they were doing, it turns out that they are the youth group from the Seventh Day Adventist Santa Ana Broadway Church. They regularly attend their service there by the barbecues. And prior to their service, every Sunday morning, they are out there picking up trash on our beach. So, to the young people at the Seventh Day Adventist Santa Ana Broadway group, I want to say thank you. Secondly, on the 25th of September, my colleague, Mr. Hill, and I met with our colleagues at the Newport Mesa Unified School District. In attendance were the superintendent of schools, other key staff members from the school district, Mr. Kiff, and members of our Public Works Department. We spoke, had a very candid discussion about the goings-on around the high schools, in particular, the condition and proliferation of parking in the residential neighborhoods. I had called this meeting earlier and found a very receptive ear from our friends at the school district. The meeting was cordial and productive, and there was consensus that we could and will work together on a range of solutions. Everybody acknowledged that parking into the neighborhoods is not beneficial for our mutual interests, be it the school or the city. And the school district, I am pleased to report, came to the fore with real, feasible, actionable, and positive changes that they are willing to implement at both Corona Del Mar High School and Newport Harbor High School. At the same time, they requested some changes from the city, changes that the residents around the schools have asked for as well. And so, Mayor Pro Tem Hill and I would like council's consent to have staff come back with a range of alternatives to address neighborhood parking around CDM High School as a start, which may include time restrictions, resident-only permits, a combination of these, or some other productive concepts. So, Mr. Kiff, I'm hopeful that we can work together to move that and advance that agenda and work with the school district to solve these problems.
Thank you. Mr. Hill.
Nothing to add, Mayor.
Councilmember Daigle.
I have none.
Mr. Hen.
Two items, Mr. Mayor. There will be a meeting of the Balboa Village Advisory Committee tomorrow at 4:00 PM at Explore Ocean, at which time the group intends to finalize parking recommendations for the village that will, I hope, not long from now, come to council as a part of an overall package of recommendations on the advancement of the master plan for Balboa Village, the revitalization of the village. And so, invite the public to attend. We're interested in feedback from members of the public as much as possible on that issue. Secondly, as we've referenced from time to time here at council, principally, Councilmember Hill and I have been pressing with Southern California Edison regarding the reliability of electric service on the peninsula and in West Newport, which, in our view, has been wholly unsatisfactory with repeated outages, including yet a few more in the last couple of weeks, one of which was fairly lengthy. And I am pleased to report that Jennifer Gages, our representative from Southern California Edison, has tried to be proactive in response to that. We've had a couple of meetings with her and senior staff. And at the last meeting, they actually did respond with some thoughts and ideas about how they might start to begin to improve the reliability of service. They're talking about instituting a sump pump pilot program. Those of you that live in the Midwest know what sump pumps are all about. You have one in every one of your basements. But basically, it's a way to keep the vaults, the underground vaults that contain their equipment, dry when water enters and to pump it out. They've got a pilot program going on, I think, in Long Beach, was it not? And they intend to extend that program to three or four locations here in Newport Beach on the peninsula to test its feasibility. There are issues associated with that that need to be worked out. But nevertheless, it was a positive response. And we talked about it perhaps being more flexible and creative about above-ground opportunities for switches as opposed to the below-ground, which are problematic in the best case because of the water table on the peninsula. And new opportunities for development of switches that are more reliable and less prone to failure and less prone to failure for the highly corrosive marine environment that we have on the peninsula. And a couple of other ideas that we talked about, better coordination of changes in our community development department that may be coming, that they can coordinate better electrical supply strategy with. So, nothing terribly dramatic at this point, but I think a breakthrough of sorts that we seem to have their attention, and they are responding in a constructive way. And we're going to do what we can to keep that ball moving. That's it, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Mr. Selich.
Thank you, Mayor. Tomorrow evening at 5:30, Speak Up Newport's going to be holding a forum. Speaking will be Councilmembers Daigle and Petros. And they're going to be discussing the recent council decisions on outsourcing trash. So, if you're interested in getting more information on that, if you have some questions you'd like to ask, it'd be a good opportunity to do so. It will be in the community room right across the hall here from the council chambers in the Civic Center. The reception starts at 5:30, and the program starts at 6 o'clock. And that's tomorrow evening. Thank you.
Thank you. And the last couple of weeks, I've had opportunity to attend a couple of public events. One was the, on Sunday, our fire department held an open house at the Santa Ana Heights Fire Department. It was great to see the guys out there with all the equipment, and the families having the chance to climb on the trucks and see what our guys do day in and day out to protect our community. We do these periodically, and I encourage you, if you haven't been, to bring your family and come out and check it out, because it's really a very fun family experience. Along with Councilman Selich and Councilman Hen, I was pleased to cut the ribbon for the West Marine Store on the peninsula, which brings a brand-new retail experience to Lido and is helping to revitalize that neighborhood. I encourage you all to go down and check out the store. I think you're really going to be impressed by it in the old pavilions market space in Lido Village. And then finally, we had a delegation of students from Okazaki, Japan, who were here. And I was privileged to be at the assembly at Ensign School, where we welcomed them to the United States. We had the opportunity for them to do a dance and a karate exhibition of Japanese skills. And it's just great, the 20-plus-year relationship that we've had with Okazaki and the students who go back and forth between our two cities. And then finally, while I see evidence of some other partisans out in the audience, I will simply say this: Go Dodgers. Okay. Now, we're going to move on to public comments on the consent calendar.
Public comments are invited on Consent Calendar, items 1 through 7. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record. To the extent that any item is removed from the consent calendar by a council member, members of the public are invited to speak on each item for up to three minutes per item. All matters listed under Consent Calendar are considered to be routine and will all be enacted by one motion in the form listed below. The city council has received detailed staff reports of each of these items recommending inaction. There will be no separate discussion of these items prior to the time the city council votes on the motion unless members of the city council request specific items to be discussed and are removed from the consent calendar for separate action.
Thank you. Councilmember Daigle.
Yes, on item 1, the minutes, please record an abstention for Daigle.
Thank you. Mr. Hen.
Yes, I have nothing to pull, Mr. Mayor, but I did want to note a recusal for myself on item number 4, which has to do with the contract for the reuse of the old city hall site. I have a business relationship with a business in Viola Lita Plaza that might be construed as a potential conflict of interest, and therefore, in an abundance of caution, will be recusing myself on that item.
Thank you. Mr. Selich.
I have none.
Councilmember Gardner.
Item 3.
Okay. Mr. Petros.
I have none.
Mr. Hill.
I have none.
And I have none. All right, so, item 3 has been pulled. Is there public comment on the consent calendar except for items 3? Item 3. Please come forward. Yes, sir.
Thank you. My name is John Kinsey. I live on Balboa Island, 305 East Bayfront. And I'd like to address the question of the planned bridge reconstruction over the canal. It's been 10 years since this has been on the table, and my wife and I have followed it out of concern. Our large concern is that during the construction, there'd be easy fire and police and 911 services to the island. And ever since the subject of the bridge was brought up, the concept has always been that there would be a temporary bridge installed at the end of Balboa Avenue over the island. And that was as recently as December of '11. I think, Councilman Selich, you participated in a meeting in where that was referenced as the plan. And therefore, my wife and I were very surprised when we learned at a meeting that was called in early March that it seemed to be off, that alternative seemed to be off the table. And after the meeting, we spoke with Pat Thomas and asked him really two questions: Who made the decision to take it off the table? And secondly, was that decision made on the basis of economics? And as far as we learned from Pat, he didn't know who made the decision, and I still don't know who made the decision. And secondly, he did say the decision was not made on the basis of economics. There had been no real thorough study of the pros and cons and the alternatives from either a safety or cost analysis of the two alternatives. And so, but he did lead us to believe, and I've had several conversations, one in person with Pat, and then subsequently, we've exchanged emails and phone calls, that this study that you are considering as item 5 was one in which these alternatives would be addressed. So, I was very surprised to read the 40-page document to find that there is only one small mention of the alternatives, and that is in connection with a traffic study. But the proposal assumes that there will be the one-lane controlled access approach to building the bridge. Now, I'm an engineer. I'm not a civil engineer. But it does seem to me that this is not a hipshot decision that can be made on the basis of obvious economics one way or another. And so, I would encourage you as council members, you know, to require that as a first phase of this study, and it's not written in there now, a first phase of this study be a comprehensive analysis of both the safety aspects of a one-lane controlled access bridge versus a temporary bridge, and also, of course, the cost analysis of both. I do have some written comments on this, not planning on taking more than my three minutes, and I would be glad to hand them over.
Thank you very much, sir. Any other speakers on matters on the consent calendar except for item 3? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the councils. Is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, if it's helpful, we could certainly, I think Pat's here, might be able to address some of those concerns of its help, because the council will be voting on that.
Sure, go ahead, Pat.
Yes, there was some consideration for the method of construction that was referred to as installing a temporary bridge at Balboa Avenue and then just completely reconstructing the Park Avenue Bridge in one phase. However, our consultant actually recommended that we not use that method, that we rebuild the existing bridge basically half at a time. So, we would leave half of it in place, rebuild one half, and we would move the traffic over onto the new half and rebuild the other half. So, that is the direction that we've been proceeding with. We did discuss those two alternatives at a few different Resident Association meetings. And the residents that did participate in that indicated that that would be the method that they would prefer. There was some discussion about the traffic issues because of the fact that we would only have a one-way bridge during the construction period. And that is a concern, and we'll do the best we can to mitigate that. We plan to use temporary traffic signals to control the traffic in the one-way direction, both on and off the little island. And also, there was some concern about emergency services. We've got the fire station, you know, right there at the bridge. The fire department actually indicated their preference would be to have the one lane open during the construction phase as well. So, that is the direction that we're going. We will be addressing the environmental impacts in the environmental document that's included in the study that's on your agenda here this evening. So, we will be addressing the traffic issues, emergency services issues, as well as other environmental impacts in this study, and then proceeding on with the final design.
Okay, thank you. All right, is there a motion on the consent calendar?
Mr. Mayor, I'd move the consent calendar items number 1 through 7 with the removal of item number 3, noting Councilwoman Daigle's extension on item number 1 and Councilmember Hen's recusal on item number 4.
Thank you. Is there a second? Please vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for... Oh, I'm sorry, that is pulled. With that, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Councilmember Gardner, item 3.
When we discussed this at our last meeting, I got focused in one direction and sort of dropped the ball on another direction, which is Section E, the subsection sole purpose is allow a person to apply for a commercial pure-permanent lease in front of abutting upland property not owned or leased by the person applying for the commercial pure-permanent lease. I've always had a problem with that, and I would suggest that we strip it. I don't see what point it serves, unless someone on staff can explain why it was added.
I'm not sure if I fully understood the question. The only part that's still there is subsection F. That's all that's being adopted as part of this ordinance. Did I misunderstand?
But my understanding was that E is still a part of it.
No, the only thing for consideration tonight for adoption is subsection F. Are you asking for, as part of what's in the ordinance that's currently on the books?
Yes. So, that would come back at another time, perhaps?
Yeah, we could include it, we could bring it back at another time for consideration, or we could bring this ordinance back and address that issue.
No, and let's not bring the whole ordinance back. Let's just, if, again, would you add that to the list to see if anybody would like being issued besides me? Otherwise, I will move the motion that we have today, the item we have today.
Motion to approve item 3. Is there a second? Any discussion? Seeing none, is there any public comment on this matter?
Thank you, Mayor Curry, and members of the city council. My name is Jim Moser, and although this item was noticed as a second reading of the ordinance, if one looks at the ordinance that you're considering tonight, which starts on page 3 of the 63 pages of this packet, it's gone through many iterations. And compare that to the ordinance that was before you at the last meeting, which begins on page 10, you'll see that the two are quite different from each other. And in my view, this is really the first reading of the draft that you're looking at tonight and that causing the confusion between Councilwoman Gardner and the city staff. And since you are now looking at this clean draft here for the first time, there's two things I would want to point out to you. Number one, if you look at the new title, which was not discussed at the last meeting, but staff-prepared, and if you look at the body of the section F, that's the bottom of page 3, you'll see that they both refer... To back up, this originally started out as an ordinance having primarily to do with the transfer of encroaching dock permits. Now, it's been reduced only to having to do with indemnifying the city in the case of claims. But you'll see both in the title and in the body, the word "commercial" appears there. So, it's applying only to commercial tidlands uses. I have not heard an explanation. I have no idea why, if the city can indemnify itself, it would not be wanting to indemnify itself in all cases, commercial and non-commercial. And then the second point that Councilwoman Gardner was trying to raise is if you look at page 26, you'll see the context in which the indemnity language was originally inserted, had a second insertion recommended by the city staff to the section immediately before that, which is Section 176060E, trying to clarify something that had been added without any public discussion back in January. And since this is, at least in my view, a first reading, I would suggest that you consider striking entirely that section that was adopted, repeal the section that was adopted in January, and remove the word "commercial" from the title and section F, so it indemnifies the city, if that's possible, from everything, not just commercial peers. And if you did that, then, of course, the city attorney would have to bring the clean version back for a first reading at your next meeting. The reason for striking that is if you look back here on page 44, you'll see that there's a letter from the attorney of Mr. Valeli on Balboa Island, who reads that clause that was inserted in January as exempting him totally from the things you were talking about regarding transferring encroaching permits. And I don't really think you want that language to remain in there. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, is there any validity to any issues raised by Mr. Moser?
There's no validity to the issues that he raised. There's no issue with the charter. You're allowed to adopt it this evening. The language that's there is the exact same language that you considered last time. The only thing that's been removed are the two sections that you decided that you did not want to adopt. So, you're free to move forward at this time with adopting the ordinance.
Thank you. There's a motion, a second. Is there any further discussion on this matter? Any further members of the audience who'd like to speak on this matter? All right, seeing none, I'll bring it back to the council. Please vote.
Prior to reading the vote, I'll read the ordinance title for ordinance number 2013-15, an ordinance of the city council of the City of Newport Beach amending Section 17.60.060 of the Newport Beach Municipal Code to require commercial tidlands users to defend and indemnify the City of Newport Beach. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Public comments on non-agenda items.
Public comments are invited on non-agenda items, generally considered to be within the subject matter jurisdiction the subject matter jurisdiction of the city council. Speakers must limit comments to three minutes. Before speaking, please state your name for the record.
Does anyone have any like to make public comments on non-agenda matters? Please come forward. All right, seeing none, I'll close public comments. We will now go to oral reports from city council members on committee activities. Councilmember Daigle.
I have none.
Mr. Henn.
I have none.
Mr. Selich.
Last week, on October the first, the Land Use Element Advisory Committee had a meeting, and we finalized all of the quantitative changes that are being proposed for the land use element. Those are now going into environmental and traffic analysis, and those are not any final recommendations of the committee, but really requested changes to land use element that are going to be reviewed by staff for the purposes of traffic in our environmental documents, and at some date in the near future, we'll be reviewing those again and deciding which ones will remain and perhaps which ones would be eliminated or modified.
Thank you. Councilmember Gardner.
I have nothing.
Mr. Petros.
Mayor Curry, on September 30th, I had the honor of chairing the aviation committee meeting in Councilmember Daigle's absence. At that meeting, there were committee reports that really focused on the levels of activity at John Wayne Airport, as they have risen modestly in the last period, and most importantly, the report to the committee on the initiation of the environmental process, the first process, public disclosure process of the impacts and mitigations that will be recommended for to continue the John Wayne Airport settlement agreement. That was a very, very good meeting. And then, just yesterday, we had a meeting of the Bicycle Master Plan Oversight Committee. This was, as I termed it yesterday, a significant and an historic meeting, in that, for the first time, senior members of Caltrans were with us at the meeting and listened to the public's concerns about mobility along Coast Highway and other state routes as it affects safety for cyclists through our town. We also had a report from the leaders of SCAG, the Regional Planning Organization, on bicycle mobility and the regional plans, and how the city can effect change here in Newport Beach to match those and really promote safe cycling in Newport Beach. So all in all, two very, very positive meetings.
Thank you. Mr. Hill.
And I have nothing.
And I have no reports. So now we'll move to public hearings, item eight, Woody's Wharf Use Permit Appeal. Is there a staff report?
Mr. Mayor, if I might interrupt momentarily, I have a property within 500 feet of this applicant, and therefore I will be recusing myself from this item. And while I have the floor, I have also been advised by our attorney that on item number nine, because of my membership in the Commodores, that I have a potential conflict of interest on item number nine as well. So I will see you when you're ready for 10.
Don't go far. All right, thank you, Mr. Hill. Staff report?
Good evening, Mayor Curry, councilmembers. Brenda Wisneski. Before you this evening is a request to review the action of the planning commission pertaining to the use permit and variance for Woody's Wharf. Woody's Wharf is located on the peninsula and is an existing restaurant that operates from 11:00 a.m. to 2:00 a.m. with an outdoor patio that is required to close at 11:00 p.m. They also are permitted to have live entertainment, and the operations have been in place since the '60s, but the current operators have owned it since 2002. Just to familiarize you with the general area, as I mentioned, it's on the peninsula, Newport Boulevard, and it's in a mixed-use zone, so it does have another restaurant to its north, American Junkie, and then we have the Newport Marina Project to the south, which is a mixed-use project, and some other mixed-use residential uses along 28th Street. Another thing to note is we do have the municipal lot that is located to the west of the 66 parking spaces. The applicant seeks to amend an existing use permit to allow them to offer patron dancing. In order to do so, they must modify their floor plan and remove chairs, and that, therefore, is considered an amendment to their existing use permit on the basis that a floor plan was approved as part of that use permit. They also seek to open at an earlier hour at 10:00 a.m. and extend the closing hour of the outdoor dining area. As I mentioned, it's currently conditioned to close at 11:00 p.m., but they want to change that till 2:00 a.m. Lastly, they want to modify their parking arrangement. Previous entitlements have allowed them some flexibility with their parking. One was a valet service, and that would allow them to reduce their parking spaces. By having the valet service, the condition was that they offer valet whenever they have the business open for operation, and make the point that sometimes when they don't have the need for valet, they wish to have valet offered on as-needed basis. In doing so, they would be short six parking spaces. A part of their application is to waive six parking spaces. And lastly, they have requested a variance so they can close the outdoor patio area. There has been a series of concerns related to noise generated at the outdoor patio area, so they have proposed a cover, but the cover would require encroachment to the 10-foot bulkhead setback, so variance is part of this application. The planning commission reviewed the application on September 5th, and they approved basically the applicant's request, with the exception of limiting the outdoor area to 2:00 a.m. only on Friday and Saturday nights, and patron dancing only on Friday and Saturday nights. The rest of the application was approved per their request. So this is going to, here is the vicinity map. A little bit more background, as I mentioned, this business has been in place in '65, and a series of entitlements have allowed them to bring up their current operations, allowing them to have live entertainment, but that live entertainment did specifically prohibit dancing. That was issued in 2006. There are also entitlements that relate to the outdoor area that required them to have a barrier established in 1988 and closure at 11:00 p.m. So in general, the issues associated with this application, the first related to the valet parking service. As was mentioned, the request is that they can offer valet service on an as-needed basis, basically when they have the need for it, and that basically is when their live entertainment occurs. So the planning commission thought that the waiver associated with the valet as well could be justified on the basis there is surrounding public parking spaces, the municipal lot across the street. So just to cherry with you both sides of the issue, another point is that, as I mentioned, the business has been issued some parking adjustments related to the other entitlements. They have a 10 parking space in new parking fee that's currently charged to allow them to use 10 spaces in the municipal lot. They also have an adjustment of parking on the basis that they offer boat slip parking of four spaces.
Brenda, can, yeah, can I, I still don't quite understand the parking. So maybe we're getting to this, and I just cut you off. If that's the case, I apologize, but, you know, the code requires 40 parking spaces for the amount of space that they occupy and the kind of use. How many actual parking spaces do they have onsite, and how many are contracted for offsite?
They have 40 parking spaces required, 26 onsite, 10 are provided across the street in the municipal lot.
Wait a minute, 26 are onsite plus 10 across the street at the municipal lot?
That's correct.
Okay.
And then four parking spaces are calculated based upon them offering eight boat slips. The 26 onsite assumes that they are tandem parking with the valet service.
Okay.
So without the valet service, they lose six parking spaces, and that is why the parking waiver of six spaces is required if they do not offer valet.
So because they have boat slips, they get a credit equivalent to four parking spaces on land?
That was something that was approved in previous entitlements.
Okay. I'm not quite sure I get that. But so realistically, then, what they have is 36 parking spaces, including six tandems.
Right, if you count the 10 in the municipal lot, they have 36, but onsite, they only have 26 based upon a tandem parking configuration.
Okay, thank you.
Please continue.
So that explains to you both sides of the issue of the parking situation. You could make the case that valet should not be required when the business is not at a high-demand timeframe, and also that there is surrounding public parking. Extension of the opening hour to 10:00 a.m., this was also considered not to be a significant issue from the planning commission's perspective on the basis that it is not a time period that is considered an issue in the area, and that breakfast services is encouraged. Patron dancing is something that is highly debated, was at the planning commission, in that the planning commission discussed whether or not patron dancing in itself would create a nightclub-type atmosphere. But conversely, they point out the fact that while the application is proposed to maintain the occupancy, then the additional dancing would not trigger more noise, because you aren't creating, you aren't having more occupants. And then the fact that live entertainment is already offered, just because people are dancing, that noise wouldn't be increased. And one point, too, here is that it does require a modified floor plan. So one case can be made, too, that with the creation of an open floor plan, it would be more challenging to ensure the occupancy levels are maintained as to what they should be. Another piece of this application is the closure of the outdoor dining area from 11:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. As I mentioned, the application includes a variance to enclose that dining area for the purposes of addressing surrounding noise concerns. I want to address that the variance will be a little bit further and tell you some images. Here's the patio itself. The proposal is to create a cover that would still maintain it as being an outdoor area and that it would open, but it would cover the outdoor area entirely. And as you see here, the bulkhead is right at the structure line, so therefore, the 10-foot variance is required.
Maybe a red marker, you can sort of outline that, where this patio cover is going?
Yeah, the bulkhead is right here, and here is the outdoor patio, and the cover would basically go over the entire patio area. The glass itself would be replaced as well with a thicker material and would extend all the way to the bottom of the thick canvas material.
Is that an outdoor patio on the building next door?
Yes, this is American Junkie to the north, and this is an outdoor patio as well.
Is there any restrictions on that?
They do not have a restriction on the hours of this business, with the exception of requiring the doors and windows to be closed at 10:00 p.m. Here's some additional photos a little closer up of the patio. And this shows basically the alignment of the bulkhead and the support the planning commission saw for the variances, that you do have adjacent properties that are also constructed at the property line. Just a view out towards the bay.
The cover is, that goes along with extending the hours that that area would be used or not? Are those to go hand-in-hand, or are they separate issues?
They are. Basically, the applicant requested for the opening to, the closure to be at 2:00 a.m., and then they came back with a proposal to cover the patio. The application, as approved by the planning commission, stated that they would be granted the 2:00 a.m. closure, provided they constructed the enclosure, the structure.
Thank you.
As I mentioned, noise was a concern that was expressed often related to this project, so the applicant developed a noise analysis in December 2012. It was done during a busy time of the year, during the holiday season, and so it was demonstrated that the patio at the time of the noise measurements was at full occupancy, and the neighborhood was active. The city did a third-party review of that application to verify their conclusions, as well as conduct measurements of our own, and to evaluate the effects of the patio cover. And the conclusions of both those is that the noise measurements were taken at the surrounding areas, as shown here in stars. One thing of note, you'll see in your packet, there were some public comments that were stating that the measurements were not taken from the nearest residential areas. There actually is a residential use on the north side of American Junkie, there's a duplex here in the front, and then obviously, the mixed-use development to the south also has a residential component. We received a letter from the applicant's noise consultant stating that they didn't feel those residential uses that are more closely located would be affected by the Woody's operation on the basis that the noise that surrounds the area is in the upper 60 decibel range. But the both noise studies determined that the sources of the noise in the area really varies, and they both pointed out the fact that these streets have noise being generated by pedestrians, and that the noise from ways in itself do not contribute to the total noise environment. However, they did state that the cover would significantly reduce whatever noise levels were coming from the patio itself, and that the operation of the patio till the 2:00 a.m. hour not create an exceedance of the noise standard. Again, looking at the variance findings, the planning commission did determine that the findings for the variance could be made on the basis that the 10-foot setback is required in order to construct the patio cover itself, and that adjacent properties are similarly encroaching into that setback. The recommendation before you tonight is to either uphold, modify, or appeal the planning commission's decision. Listen here are the actions that they took, and I am available if you want to go into these in any more detail.
All right, we do have a presentation. I will invite the applicant to make a presentation and the appellant to make a presentation. Are there any questions for staff before we begin that process? Mr. Petros.
Very quickly, Brenda, can you go back to the picture of the patio with the table? That's fine. I've got it right there. There are 20 spaces, 20 parking spaces in the lot, stripes, parking spaces.
That's correct. Without the valet, there'd be 20.
And then the 10 spaces during the day, are those guaranteed spaces in our municipal lot? Do we dedicate and cordon off 10 spaces?
We do not.
Okay. So during the morning times or brunch time, when there might not be the demand, there are 20 spaces guaranteed available for the restaurant onsite?
That's correct.
Okay, that's about six spaces per thousand square feet of use generally, and if I look at that, too, that's about a quarter of a parking space for every 35 square feet. 35 square feet is generally the notion for public assembly and parking, and it's about the size of one of those tables, where I can seat four people. A quarter of a parking space for seating of four people. Okay. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. All right, let me, Mr. Diamond, invite you to come forward, sir. What I'd like to do is have the applicant and his, or the applicant's representative make a presentation. That'll be followed by Mr. McCetrick, who's representing the appellants, and the original appellant will make a presentation that will be somewhat longer than normal public comment period, and then we'll invite the public to come and comment. Mr. Diamond, five or six minutes, would that be sufficient?
Yes, I have basically some procedural questions and challenges, and then my clients are going to also make the factual presentation.
All right.
But in terms of the procedure, I noticed you have Mr. Rowan here, a city attorney. Is he here to advise you?
No, I'll be, I'm the city attorney here.
I'm sorry.
But I'll be advising the council.
Okay. We had some jurisdictional questions and challenges, which we think would be appropriately made now rather than waiting till the end. Number one, obviously, we're here because the planning commission voted basically in favor of the applicant, and apparently, somebody appealed the decision. According to your code, which I've looked at, appeals may be initiated by any interested party. As I understand it, no party to the proceeding, and the party to the proceeding would be my client, the applicant, and the people who oppose the application at the planning commission level. They would also be parties to the proceeding, but they did not appeal. We did not appeal. I understand Councilmember Michael Henn is the one who appealed, but we don't see any provision in your code for having a council member appeal any decision, and so we respectfully object to the jurisdiction of the city council to entertain an appeal that was not brought by one of the parties. And we all know, of course, now that standing is important. We learned that from the Proposition 8 litigation, where the U.S. Supreme Court said that the appellants had no standing to appeal to the Ninth Circuit and to the U.S. Supreme Court because they were not legally entitled to do that. We don't believe that Mr. Henn has standing to appeal. We can't find it anywhere in the code section. Even if he did have standing, which he does not, he would then have to be disqualified, and we would respectfully ask that Councilman Henn recuse himself, and if he doesn't do it, we're asking that the chair recuse Mr. Henn, because he cannot obviously both appeal the planning commission decision and then also sit in judgment of the very appeal that apparently he caused in the first place. He was able to save the appellants about $4,000 or $5,000 in filing fees, so I don't know whether the city attorney wants to deal with this issue now, but we wanted to bring it up. I don't know whether this would be a good time to pause and let the city attorney respond, or whether I should go on to some of the other points.
Well, the code does provide that the city council member can basically call it up for review. He's not expressing any bias for or against your project, so it is appropriate for him to be a member of the sitting body that's going to hear this item. So I don't find any merit to either of the points that you've raised.
It says appeals may be initiated by any interested party. So is Mr. Henn considered the appellant under a code section 20.64.030?
Yeah, I don't think it's a subject matter I'm going to debate with you. My advice, though, is that Mr. Henn can participate in this proceeding, and his calling this up for review was appropriate.
Okay, we respectfully disagree, and we do object on that basis. And speaking of Councilman Henn, and I don't want to get too much into the merits now, but the city must be aware, recently, the Ninth Circuit Court of Appeals handed down a published decision setting a precedent in the case of Pacific Shores Properties versus the city of Newport Beach. It was just decided September 22. It was just decided September 20, 2013. A three-judge panel, in an opinion written by Circuit Judge Stephen Reinhardt of the Ninth Circuit unanimously reversed Judge Selman and ruled that the city acted improperly in adopting various ordinances designed apparently to get rid of rehabilitation-type or addiction-type facilities. And that litigation has cost this city hundreds of thousands of dollars in litigation, and we want desperately to avoid causing the good people of the City of Newport Beach to have to incur substantial additional legal fees over litigation regarding this particular project. And I'm sure that Councilman Hen is very familiar with this case. I'm not sure whether you've even had a chance to meet an executive session to discuss the litigation, since it was only filed September 20, 2013, so I'm not sure if you're familiar with it. But in this particular case, we have Woody's Wharf, a restaurant, as the planning commission determined, that's been in operation for many, many years in a mixed-use zoning area, where it's not, it's not supposed to be a perfectly quiet, serene residential area like some other residential areas are in the city. It's mixed use. But we understand that Councilman Hen doesn't like the project, that is why he called it up immediately for review. We don't believe that he is neutral. We believe he's biased in favor of the persons who oppose the confirmation that Woody's Wharf has been operating properly for years. In this particular case, we're not asking for any change in the actual use of the property. Historically, and we have evidence to back this up, and we have Mr. Potts here, do you have the entertainment permits you can hand out? Do you have those here?
No.
Can you step forward, please? We want to show that the city has, over the years, issued entertainment permits to lots of establishments in the area throughout the city. We have the exhibits. Mr. Potts is going to distribute them, so that each one of you has an opportunity to look at the individual package. We also have an email from detective from the Newport Beach Police Department confirming that the business can operate until 2:00 in the morning. Mr. Greg Pappas and Mark Serventi will be addressing the issue of when they purchased the property in the first place and purchased the business, they were led to believe that the business could remain open until 2:00 a.m. And they've been operating that way for a number of years. So the reason I mention that, the reason I mention that is that this is not a change in the way the business is to be operated. This is not like something that the neighbors have to fear, because it will not be changed. It'll simply be operating in the way they've always been operating since the 1960s. Woody's Wharf goes back into the history of Newport Beach a long ways. People remember the operation of the business years ago, and they will confirm that it's always operated the same way. It's had a long-running operation here in the City of Newport Beach. The only possible arguable argument that could be made against Woody's Wharf was refuted when not only did it conduct a noise study by reputable sound engineering company, but that study was replicated independently by the city, hiring its own consultant, to also verify that the noise is not coming, if there is any noise at all, background noise, it's not coming from Woody's Wharf. But over and over again, the people who live in the 28th Street condo, and just a couple of them, and talk about making noise, they're the ones who are making the noise here. Just a few people who live in that condo to the north don't like the fact that Woody's Wharf is operating, and they falsely claim that there's noise coming from Woody's Wharf. We've been hearing that for a long time. So we finally said, we're going to prove once and for all that they're wrong, that they're just not telling you the truth. So we had the noise study done, and it verified our position that Woody's Wharf is not the source of the noise that they either are hearing or imagining that they're hearing. And it's not even all of the people who live at the condo to the north, just a few who've been complaining. There is no noise. And so we have a staff report that refers to the two studies. We have the studies. So there is not going to be any increase in noise. Now, out of an abundance of caution, just to remove all possible doubt, my client volunteered to accept as a condition that a cover would be placed on the patio, to make sure that there is no noise at all coming from Woody's Wharf. Something that it really didn't have to do, it's going to be expending a lot of money to do that, but to make sure that the doubt that might exist is removed, they did the study, and as I said, the city very commendably did not want to rely just on the study done by the applicant, so it did its own study and confirmed the analysis made by our expert sound engineer. So I think, in conclusion, because I'm using up my time, I want my client to also have some time to address you, and also to answer any questions you have. There's no change in the operation. The planning commission did a very good job. They're professionals with the staff. They came up with a good decision. We do have one exception to that. We believe that the late hours to 2:00 a.m. should be an additional night during the week, and also for holidays, which is very minimal. And so we respectfully ask that if you do have jurisdiction to entertain this matter, that you also grant that, which is part of the application. I do have another procedural question, and that is, if the city attorney will oblige me here. Apparently, if there's a tie vote, that the decision of the planning commission stands as the final decision in the case, but the section that I have does not say who has the burden of proof here, by what standard, and by what votes. We note, for example, that Mayor Prochem Hill recused himself, so we are down to six, which means there is a potential for a tie vote, although if Councilman Hen were to disqualify himself, we would have the advantage of having an odd number again. So one question is whether or not the vote that you take requires four, because there are seven members, or whether it only takes three, if there were only five members here. Who has the burden? Is it the applicant, or is it the appellant? And by what standard of proof? That is, do you review the planning commission decision under the abuse of discretion standard? Are you conducting this proceeding de novo? There is a reference to the procedure that this is de novo, and if that is the case, then we have to go to the trouble of presenting all of the evidence again, even though we presented that to the planning commission. So if we can get a little guidance here, we could save ourselves a few hours in terms of the presentation.
It is a de novo hearing, and we'll address any issues regarding tie votes, if there are tie votes.
But if it's de novo, does the applicant then have the burden, or is it the appellant who has the burden?
So the applicant has the burden.
So we have to convince, how many, four, or three, or five? We have to get the majority?
To get a majority vote, it'd be four.
Four out of the remaining six.
Um, excuse me, I'm confused. I would think that the decision of the planning commission would stand unless a majority of the council decided a contrary position.
That's our position. We believe that the appellant, whoever that is, whether it's council member Hen or the opponents at the planning commission level, we believe they would have the burden of persuading a majority of the council to overturn the planning commission decision. If that were not the case, there would have been no need to say in Section 3, in the event of a tie vote by the review authority on an appeal, the decision being appealed shall stand. It would be inconsistent with that statement to then say that we have the burden of persuading the council by a majority vote to overturn the planning commission. That position you've taken, Mr. City Attorney, would be inconsistent with what would happen if there were a tie vote.
Well, how about this, Mr. Diamond? Why don't you present your case? I'll take a look at the rules again, and then we'll see what happens if there is a tie vote, and I'll address the issue at that time. How's that?
Okay. So again, just for the record, we do have a court reporter here, but she's apparently in another room. You didn't have, you weren't that hospitable to court reporters. I didn't know whether we should take that as some sort of attitude, but we do have a court reporter here, and we do want to indicate that it's important to know what the standard of proof is and what the votes are. But without further ado, I would like to...
Before you do...
Oh, sure. Okay?
This is great, but is there something that tonight I should look at? I can't read this whole thing while you're talking. Are there certain parts here that you referred to, that, pages that you would really like us to look at as we go along?
Thank you for the question, Councilmember Gardner. The package is designed to show two things. One, the number of entertainment permits that have been issued to all kinds of locations in the city, because there's an argument that a restaurant should not have entertainment, but restaurants do have entertainment, so that's one point. So you don't have to read all of that to know that, although we do want it to be part of the record in case a judge would be called upon to review what we're saying here. And secondly...
Excuse me, I'm a bit confused. Is the entertainment permit at issue here tonight?
It is not.
Thank you. This, just based on what you said, this is pretty much entirely superfluous.
Well...
The entertainment permit is not at issue here tonight.
Well, that's fine. I was anticipating, maybe being too paranoid, anticipating an argument that this is not a proper use because entertainment is planned there. So we just wanted you to know that entertainment permits are in existence throughout the city, and an entertainment permit is not something that would be negative in terms of the business in question. The other issue would be the hours of operation. When my clients bought this business a number of years ago, they were led to believe, both obviously by the seller of the business, by the reputation of the business, by the people going to the business, and most importantly, by a detective's email...
That's what I wanted to touch on. Is that in here?
Yes.
It should be in there.
And can you give me a page number or something?
Potts?
The first two or three pages? All right, thank you.
So they were led to believe that they could stay open until 2:00 a.m. The point being that essentially, what we're seeking and what we sought before the planning commission was confirmation that they have the right to do what they've been doing all along. And I wanted to assure the neighbors that upholding the planning commission's decision is not going to result in a change in the use. It is what it's always, it will be what it always has been. There's no change here. They have entertainment, and the question regarding the entertainment permit is linked to the dance issue, because during the process that has gone before you, that has led us to here tonight, some people, some opponents of the business have argued that they cannot have patron dancing. The argument has been made that patron dancing is prohibited. It's not prohibited, but when they got the entertainment permit, added into that condition was a so-called prohibition against dancing. But that prohibition is not a flat prohibition against dancing, because there is no code section that says they cannot dance, especially if they charge, have a cover charge. But the prohibition against dancing is not an independent code section. It was put in there by somebody in the city, but it was designed to say that the entertainers could not dance, not that the patrons cannot dance. So it got all confused. So the reason we wanted to submit this was to say that we're not, they're not asking that entertainers be permitted to dance, only that the patrons be able to dance among themselves. So the history of this project has been a little convoluted because of some failures of communication and so forth, but that's the reason for that, to show that patron dancing is okay. It's not prohibited. It was a condition imposed on the entertainment. The entertainers are not dancing, but that's really the purpose of it. So you don't have to read every single piece of paper.
Okay, well, I'm still, I'm a little confused about this, and I'm not trying to be argumentative with you. I just want to be sure that I'm reading what you want me to read, which is, we had a meeting with the owners of Woody's Wharf. Would that be the email? The purpose of the meeting was to discuss their occupancy levels, as well as issues concerning the patio? Is that the one you're talking about? Okay. So it says what their things are, and that the patio may not be utilized after 11:00 p.m. That's the one?
No, there's a reference to the 2:00 a.m.
No.
Well, not in what, unless I'm not reading it right.
Well, and there's no reference at all to dancing in here.
Yeah, so do we have not the right one?
About the patio being open till 2:00 a.m.
No.
No. Do we have the wrong one?
What?
And... Mayor Curry.
I'm sorry, he needs to... Oh, I see. Additionally, their use permit allows them to operate the outdoor patio until closed. It is the outdoor deck. That's where you're making that distinction?
Yes.
All right.
Mr. Petros?
Mr. Kiff, if there are questions on use permits, would you consider the police department to be the authority on that, or a community development representative?
Primarily community development.
Thank you.
Well, that's why they've come, my clients have come to the city, because there was some confusion about it.
That was to the city manager. Thank you.
All right, Mr. Diamond, do you want to have your client come forward, then?
Yes, thank you so much, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I have one clarifying statement I want to make. Mr. Diamond didn't say this in so many words, but talking about us being inhospitable to his court reporter, we actually did, for the folks at home, open up the whole community room for the one court reporter. She is back there now. I even went back there myself to make sure that she had hooked up her system in time for the meeting, and I would not call that inhospitable.
Maybe that's a wrong choice of words, but I will say that when I got here and I saw her, she could find no plug to set up her machine. So ordinarily, the way it works is you have a court reporter who sits right...
I'm sorry, you need to stay in front of the microphone, please.
We're good. Been on council for seven years. I don't recollect a proceeding in which a court reporter was...
This is not a court of law.
If this is Newport Beach, we have an entire community center set aside for court reporters. So let's invite your client to come forward, and we'll move on with the presentation.
And if I could take just a moment, Mr. Diamond did ask some important questions.
Oh, that's good.
I did review the code, and he's correct. It is a de novo hearing, so it's completely within your discretion to make the determinations you want to make. And if it is a tie vote at the end of the day, then the decision of the planning commission does stand.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Diamond.
Thank you very much.
Please come forward.
I mean to insult the city, but I just said that ordinarily, when I go to city meetings or courts, whatever, the reporters like to sit right in the middle of the action, and there was no opportunity for her to do that. Nothing to plug in, no equipment, nothing. So it looked like a little hostility towards the court system. And also, it's our obligation to preserve the record for the court if we have to go the court route. We hope we don't have to do that.
Worst thing's been said about the building, Mr. Diamond. That's fine. Thank you. Come on down.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Petros.
While he's approaching us, I want to make sure, the noise study that was done, Brenda, was done to a threshold of 60 dB? Was that the threshold that was used?
They evaluate them based upon the noise standards, and the evening standard is 60.
So the threshold was something akin to cars on the road, a lawnmower, loud, it's loud noise?
That's correct.
Okay, so it's, Mr. Diamond said, and I quote, "No noise at all." That the Woody's Wharf creates no noise at all. I want to make sure that we're very clear. The threshold was not no noise at all.
That's correct.
Thank you.
About three minutes, sir. Would that be good?
It may be a little bit longer than that.
There's a difference in noise and sound.
Maybe a little bit longer than that.
Well, do what you can, okay?
I'll do my best.
Okay.
Thank you. My name is Mark Serventi. I'm one of the co-owners of Woody's Wharf. There's four of us. I've got my partners here tonight, Ralph Nudo, Chris Pappas, Greg Pappas. I've also got our attorney, Roger Diamond, who you've already met, and our entitlement consultant, Marty Potts, in the back over here. Just to give you a little background, I want to thank staff for their efforts to get us to this point. This hearing is the culmination of years and an exorbitant amount of money to get us to this point today. We've been working with this operation, and all we're trying to do is get this operation recognized for what we've been doing for decades. We haven't changed anything. When we took over, there were bands in there, there were DJs in there, there was dancing, the patio was open till 2:00. We didn't change any of that. So we're just doing what we've always done. You know, this is the fourth time I've come to speak in front of either the planning commission or the city council, and we're just tired of doing this. We're business guys, we want to run our business. It's all we want to do. We're currently meeting the city codes. We're just tired. We've tried to work with the city. We've been rebuffed at every turn. We've been put down, you know, dead-end streets several times at a cost of tens of thousands of dollars to do that. We understand that this is a very politically motivated vote tonight. We see that. All we're asking is that you folks make a decision simply based on the... All we're asking is that you folks make a decision simply based on the law and the city codes. That's it. We know you're going to hear some emotional testimony from some of our neighbors. We read the correspondence. We don't agree with it. Without tonight's approval, Woody's is entitled to operate it till 2:00 a.m. That's not in question. With or without tonight's approval, there's not going to be a change in the neighborhood. The neighborhood is the way it is. It's the way it has been. It is what it is. You know, we've read the staff report and the recommendations and conditions, as well as the residents' correspondence. There's many misconceptions in there. Currently, we have the right to operate like 2:00 a.m., like I said, without this application. That's not changing. We have the right to have music until 2:00 a.m. That's not changing. We're not asking for music or dancing on our patio. We've never asked for that. We don't want that. We're not trying to be obstinate. We're not trying to be scofflaws. But we're asking to be recognized in an operation that's been going on for decades, going back to the '60s. We're offering to invest in a patio cover that's going to take away any semblance, any idea that there's noise. We think that we, along with the city and the consultants, have proved that there's no noise emanating from Woody's Wharf that's causing a disturbance at those 28th Street condos. We're willing to construct a retractable roof system that will keep closed at night to eliminate any thought of noise. To this point, the police department has made no recommendation to the city as to our application. Their recommendation was no recommendation. Having just received the staff report at 5:00 p.m. on Friday, we've submitted to the city staff our exceptions to the findings and conditions of approval, and we seek your concurrent approval of the changes that we asked for this evening. We're basically asking for two things. We want the ability to run our patio from 11:00 p.m. to 2:00 a.m. three days a week. We're asking for nine hours a week and holidays. We're not asking for outdoor music. We're not asking for dancing out there. We're also asking that you guys recognize the fact that we're dancing and that that's a legal use for us. Others in the neighborhood have this, including our neighbor directly next door. You guys have granted these privileges recently. We've issued a staff and abbreviated list of open issues that remain, and we're asking the council to review these this evening in hopes of acceptance. I want to talk to you a little bit about the history of Woody's. We've been around for almost 50 years, going back to 1965. Woody's has been owned in the past by Chuck Norris, a celebrity, who had celebrities working there before they were famous. We're open 365 days a year. We're open every single day. We cater to the local people. We cater to the people that live in the area. The proof of this is if you look at our parking lot, and I had some of the 28th Street Marina folks lurking in our parking lot Friday and Saturday night, taking pictures. One thing I pointed out to them, it was 12:30, we had a full capacity, but several people waited in line to get in. We had 21 cars in the parking lot. 21 cars in the parking lot. The people that are going to Woody's, they're driving there, they're not driving there. They're taking taxis, they're walking, they're coming by boat, they're riding their bikes. These are people that live in the neighborhood. We feel that we are very diligent in the way we run the place. We're responsible owners of this. I want to show you something. These are IDs that we've collected from some of the folks that come in or try to come in that don't belong there. We take these. Fake IDs that people have tried to come in and bring to Woody's.
Sir, if you can speak to the mic, please. Thank you.
Those are all fake IDs. We've taken those over the last couple of years. I actually have a bounty for my security guys. I've given them $10 for every one they take away. You know, we don't want that undesirable, we don't want the underage people. We've had many ABC sting operations. We've never had a problem with the ABC. They send us a letter every time we pass, and they say, "Thank you for your efforts and your diligence in keeping underage people out of there." We're a good neighbor. We voluntarily close our docks at 10:00 p.m. every night, and we don't let people sit on there and play their music and drink. There's no partying on our docks after 10 o'clock. People can come and go from our establishment, but they're not allowed to loiter on those boats. We've implemented a sound system that management can control, so if you've got a DJ that wants to go to a certain level with the volume, he's not able to do that because of the sound system that we've implemented. In November 2012, we presented to the Planning Commission, asking for the dancing and the patio hours. At that point, staff recommended that dancing should be allowed at Woody's Wharf. They also recommended that we not have the hours on the patio. The Planning Commission denied both of those things at that time, but they did express a need for a sound study, so we went ahead and invested in the sound study. Two sound studies were done. The city sound study was done. We didn't know it was being done, but it was done. We made a second presentation to the Planning Commission last month. At that point, the city staff recommended that we should have the patio for those late-night hours, and they recommended that we shouldn't have dancing at that point. And the only reason they changed their mind on the dancing was because the Planning Commission at that point had voted for no dancing. After that vote by the Planning Commission, they voted in our favor, five to two, and gave us both the patio hours and the dancing. Included in the staff's report are two noise measurements, surveys, and I'm going to take one quote from each of those. In the first one that we commissioned, the Mestry-Greevy Report, it says, "No noise specific to Woody's Wharf was ever identified at the mixed-use residences. Noise from Woody's Wharf is not audible at the mixed-use residences." The report also addresses our neighbor to the south. The conclusion there was that no impact above that which is allowed by the city codes was distinguishable. And in fact, in those, the new development to our south, their disclosure documents that were issued by the city when they got their entitlements, those documents say that noise up to 70 decibels from Newport Boulevard will be something that they're going to have to deal with. That's much lower, that's much higher than the noise emanating from Woody's Wharf. We're within the city codes today without any construction of that patio cover. In the sound study that was done by RA Acoustics, that we didn't know was being done, that was hired by the city to have done, it says, "On our site visit measurements and observations, the noise levels at the multi-use residential buildings are generated via pedestrian and vehicular traffic on Newport Boulevard, not from Woody's Wharf proper." The conclusion from both reports is that Woody's Wharf is not a contributor of the noise which disturbs the residents. We've been giving this testimony forever. We gave this testimony to the Planning Commission last November, all based on our nightly decibel readings. As owners of Woody's Wharf, we take walks through that 28th Street Marina, and we record, and we have for up to four years now, the noise levels that are coming in there, and we've got those tracked by night. Nonetheless, we do remain committed to constructing that patio cover. We feel that if we put that up, and the sound engineers have already said this, that there's going to be no audible noise coming from us that can be heard at those condos. Even though today we meet the City of Newport Beach noise regulations, we're still willing to construct that. What's happened in the past is for years, we've heard noise, 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 noise. And then as soon as we did the sound study, the residents did a 180. It wasn't noise anymore that was so much a factor, but now we're a public nuisance. We're a public nuisance in the fact that we exist. You know, you're probably going to hear some noise stuff tonight, but now we're a nuisance. I don't know how you can come back to that, but all we're asking for is to be allowed to keep the cover charge. We've got a whole list of conditions that you folks are trying to take away. We want to be able to keep that cover charge. It's important to our business. It's one of the ways that we show preference to our local customers. We give them considerations. It provides for a higher level of customer.
How does, you let some people in without a cover charge because they're regulars, or?
Yeah.
Okay. I just wasn't sure what you were meaning there.
Correct. Yeah, we have a whole slew of people that we let in because we know them. You know, the guy lives across the street. You know, he comes in all the time. Come on in. You know, there's people that frankly won't go to Woody's because we do charge a cover charge. And, you know, if they don't want to pay the cover charge, so be it. We're happy not to accept that person as a customer. We don't mind that. Currently, Woody's has the right to operate its restaurant with live entertainment to 2:00 a.m. We don't feel that dancing contributes a nuisance to that. You know, when someone's dancing, they're not drinking. When they're dancing, they're burning off whatever alcohol they have consumed. We think it's a positive thing for the neighborhood. People in the neighborhood want to dance. They love the fact that they can walk to Woody's, they can bike to Woody's, they can ride their boats to Woody's, and that they come in. You know, there's dance permits that have been issued all throughout the city, including to our next-door neighbor. We're just asking for equity. We want the same thing that others have already been granted. We want the council to allow us to move tables and chairs. You know, we're a restaurant. That's what restaurants do. They move their tables and chairs. If I've got two four-top tables, and I want to put those together to let eight people sit together, we do that. We do that on a regular basis. We want you to allow us to charge that cover and give us the variance for the retractable roof construction. That's my presentation.
Thank you.
If you have questions, I'll be-
Yeah, I do have a couple of questions, because I don't want you to get maybe sort of blindsided later on, so I want to be sure that I understood you and I'm not misunderstanding you. Do you, right now, agree that the patio, the outdoor area, is supposed to be closed at 11:00 p.m.? Or do you say, no, that's, it's always been open to 2:00?
It's always been open. We've never closed it.
Okay.
We've been told three different times.
Now, I'm asking this because the police report suggests that they have met with you and said it should be closed at 11:00 p.m.
We've been told 11:00 p.m. We've been told 12:00 a.m., and we've been told 2:00 o'clock.
Okay, well-
Three different times.
All right, so, but the police report says 11:00 p.m., so that's what I'm looking at. And then you suggested that, to me, it was a, it wasn't a positive police report.
Well, the recommendation was to make no recommendation. If you look at their recommendation section-
Yes, but it did say they had significant concerns about the proposed changes in the operational characteristics. So that, to me, is sort of a-
And that's one of my points. If you ask the policeman on the street, and when he comes in, "Are we open till 2:00 o'clock?" "We're open till 2:00 o'clock. We always have been." We're not asking to change what we've already been doing. We want to continue on with what we're doing. You know, several years ago, I want to say it was 2008, we sat in a meeting with police, fire, planning department, several departments throughout the city. There was questions about what time we were supposed to close. Patrick Alfred in the planning department went back and did the research. The police department asked him to do the research. He's the one that came back and came up with a determination that we're able to keep that outside area open till 2:00 a.m. He came back, told that to the police department. The police department called us and said, "You can stay open till 2:00 a.m." We asked for a confirmation of that in an email, and that's when that email was sent. So that's why we have that email that says we can stay open till 2:00.
Makes a distinction between the deck-
There is a deck, and there's a patio.
And the patio, okay. And then a question of staff. Are there, you have a permit, and I understand your argument that what it refers to is, like you couldn't have a go-go dancer, but patrons can dance. The permits of establishments that do have dancing that we say, "Okay," is that a different kind of permit? Is it, have a different number? Or is it just a distinction that we're not seeing here? Why would there be one interpretation and then another? Do you understand what I'm asking you? They say that their permit, I read in the staff report, that their permit does not permit dancing.
That's correct.
They say, "Well, obviously, we have, do we have establishments in the city where they have permits that do permit dancing?"
Yes, we do.
And is that a different, is that a different permit?
Yes, it is. We have the cafe dance permit to allow for dancing.
All right. Is there a separate permit that talks about entertainment, dancing?
Yes, we have a live entertainment permit, which this facility has. Live entertainment, not dancing.
Okay. But I mean, there's almost three distinctions here. There is a permit that says you may have live entertainment, which means music, but does it also mean dancing? That they could be dancing around up on stage, as long as they kept their clothes on?
No. Live entertainment is for, is for music.
Is for music, okay. So then you have a permit that permits music and lets the patrons dance?
No, separate permit. Just two permits. The live entertainment permit and the cafe dance permit.
Okay. And then is there a third permit where you could have your go-go dancers?
Not to my knowledge.
Okay. All right, thank you.
One distinction there, the application is one page, one form. It's one form for both. So if you apply for-
Mr. Hen, do you have a question?
Yeah, I have a question for staff. Have you encountered any other applicants that have been confused about what an entertainment permit permits and what a cafe dancing permit permits?
Not that I've experienced. And in fact, the live entertainment permit does have the applicant's signature indicating they did acknowledge that, it clearly states dancing is prohibited. And I'll add that the outdoor dining permit does state, which allows for the outdoor dining, the closure 11:00 p.m. So I'm not sure why there is confusion here.
Okay. I'd like to come back for a moment, Mark, on two other things. You commented about the need to move tables around to make a four-top and eight-top and that sort of thing, which I understand. But my understanding about this request was that you wanted to remove chairs, and I guess maybe tables, to create a something like 400-square-foot unobstructed area for people to stand in?
What we do-
The removal of tables and chairs is qualitatively different than rearranging tables and chairs. Which is it?
In the case of the tables, we move those to the perimeter of the patio. We may remove one or two, but we basically keep the tables there and move those to the perimeter of the patio. And yes, we do remove some of those chairs.
So it is the removal of chairs and the removal of tables to create-
Oh, we move-
-a large, unobstructed area?
And what we're doing is, we found that people want to stand and talk more than they do they want to sit.
Okay. And then on this issue of the parking lot, you know, I drive up and down the peninsula, I don't know, since I've been on council, thousands of times, and at all times of the day and night, really. And I've observed, in my own observation, difficulties with the operation of your parking lot, especially on Fridays and Saturday nights, where there are cars, eastbound cars queued up, waiting to make a left turn into your parking lot, and westbound cars that stack up, sometimes in traffic lanes, waiting to get into your parking lot. I've even seen people backing out of your parking lot because they got in there and, for whatever reason, needed to back out. So it seems very clear to me that despite the fact that your parking lot may have some amount of occupancy available some nights, that it's a congested thing. It's a congested area. And I'm confused about why you would, why the valet service should be a discretionary thing, when in my personal observation, I've seen problems with the operation of your parking lot.
We have a valet anytime we're busy.
I'm sorry?
Every time we're busy, we have a valet. Every Friday and Saturday night, we have a valet. We have a valet during the summer, during the day. If I were to have a valet sitting out there right now, in the end of the wintertime, during sitting out there right now, and into the winter time, during the day, he would be sitting out there doing nothing. There's nothing for a valet to do at certain points. And that's when we don't have a valet. We don't have a problem having a valet in that parking lot. He can park up to 35 cars in that parking lot today.
I know, but I, but there are congestion problems that go beyond just the ability to park cars. But let me get a clarification on this. The valet parking requirement that's in existence today, is that a requirement that's in, that is in effect for all hours of operation of Woody's, or just for some hours of operation?
All hours of operation.
It is all hours of operation.
That's correct.
So from 11:00 o'clock in the morning until they close at night, every day, they have to have a valet parking arrangement in that facility?
That's correct.
Okay.
Any other questions, Mike?
No, no, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Thank you very much. All right, let me invite Mr. McKidrick to come forward. Mr. McKidrick represents, I believe, some of the 28th Street Marina residents. No? All right, well, he'll tell us who he represents, and I'm going to give him a little bit of time in fairness here to sort of make his case as well. Mr. McKidrick.
Thank you. Good evening, Mayor and Council. My name's Gary McKidrick. I am a partner at the law firm of Allen Mackens. I'm also a Corona del Mar resident. I'm here tonight representing NP Beach Marina LLC. And I want to orient you a little bit to who this client is, and we've got, get the first picture, please. We just heard some testimony. The neighborhood hasn't changed. Well, I'm proud to say that we are the first step in a revitalization of the Balboa Peninsula. So I'm, as you're orienting to the picture, this is a project that was approved in 2006. My client acquired in 2012. I'm going to give you a few more orientation pictures, and I'm going to come back to them as we present them. This one's important. It's, it's another elevation of the project. And I want you to orient to where the car is going down. You'll see a entrance to a parking garage. If you look to, at least as I'm looking at it, to the left of the picture will be the property line with Woody's. That location, and from a distance standpoint, is probably 40 feet or so, but keep that in mind as to the location of our parking, as it relates, excuse me, to Woody's. Next page, please. This is the orientation from the, from the harbor, of course. As you look at our project, we're well under construction right now. And if you look on the right side of your picture, you'll see the edge of Woody's, and you'll see the adjacency of our, of our project. It stretches all the way down to the shipyard. So if you go back, we don't need to go back, but the elevations, as you saw, of the mixed-use project. This one's very important. It's going to be a little hard to see for the, those in the audience, but I think I've, I've filed this before, and I believe that you'll be able to see. This is our site plan with dimensions on it. And so what we've highlighted here, on the left side, is the adjacency of our mixed-use project with Woody's. If you look, the property line of Woody's, and then you'll see an adjacency, you'll see a staircase, and then that first building, Building H, which is hard to see for the residences, but hopefully, if you can, yeah, thank you very much. Building H, Building H is a residence. So this is commercial, bottom, residential on top. I'm going to come back a little these pictures, and you may have a question for me later. Tonight, the council has a public policy decision. That's what tonight's about. The operational characteristics approved by the Planning Commission for Woody's are inconsistent with the residential character of this area, specifically the residential character of the component of the project you're looking at, but with the surrounding neighborhood. And more importantly, inconsistent with the relevant policies of the 2006 general plan. On behalf of our client, I'm going to encourage you to vote to reverse the Planning Commission. Let me give you some reasons why. Number one, location. This is pretty evident. One thing I need to point out is in the staff report, that, along with the Planning Commission, there were references to South Coast Shipyard Project, vacant building project, 100 feet away, residence. Please orient yourself to that picture. We're 2 feet. Our residence, the first master bedroom, is less than the distance from Councilman Hen to Councilman Gardner. 15 feet. Okay? Next. We assisted this client in the acquisition of this property in 2012. At that time, Woody's Wharf's a restaurant. We looked at the zoning. The zoning for our project is M U W 2. It allows maritime uses, along with mixed use, and residential on the upper floors. I want to quote one that you know, but for all of you that worked so hard on that general plan, for the land uses in our city. The districts, so this is the quote of what the district we're in. Districts where residences and businesses are intermixed, that are designated and planned to ensure compatibility among the uses, that they are highly livable for residents, and that they are high-quality design reflecting the traditions of Newport Beach. We understand mixed use. This project is mixed use. It is what mixed use is about. It mixes restaurant with residential with commercial. We're evident, we understand noise, we understand constructability, we understand adjacencies. The action by the Planning Commission, however, would operate, would allow Woody's to operate in a manner that is incompatible with the intent of the general plan, and in conflict with the Newport Marina project. Any expansion would be detrimental to the general welfare of the residential occupants in my client's project and the neighborhood. We're also concerned about Woody's property being underparked. This is going to have a direct negative impact on our property. I'm going to get to it in a second, but the CUP modification of any form or nature is different. My client's committed a significant amount of money in this project and in other places in Newport. There are no buffers to mitigate Woody's from this project. The extended hours on the outside patio, the lack of parking, the introduction of dancing are the utmost concern to us. The operators of a restaurant and those of a nightclub are very different, and they have different impacts on the neighbors. Example, the nightclub use in this residential area is a different characteristic that is not consistent with your general plan. You're going to have ample testimony tonight, so I won't go into it, on the current condition on the peninsula. The importance of behavior in the past is an indicator of behavior in the future. Please, City Council, on a policy decision, do not create additional conflicts. The consistent history is disregard for the CUP. I have one more slide I want to show you. This is a Facebook page, and please orient down, please. Thank you, thank you. We've got circled, if you can blow that up, football fans. Woody's will now open at 9:30 every Sunday during football season. Get in, get a table, and get some delicious brunch. I'm sure it's great, and it's terrific service. However, it's an hour and a half before they're able to operate. That's today. Okay, you can take that off. And please put back the other picture on adjacency. Thank you. So the parking problem. Woody's is underparked per code. It just is. The variance on the in-lu parking was granted 1983, okay, 1983, 30 years ago, when the characteristics of this peninsula were different. It's underparked, and there will be dramatic and direct impact on our client. I want to orient you again to the parking, where it says Building A. There's arrows going in and out. Woody's is directly to the left. You'll have testimony tonight. In fact, Councilman Hen raised a question regarding the existing condition of cars lining up, and it is evident, and it is, it is important that parking will be utilized on our project. We're going to do everything we can to protect our parking. We're going to do arms. We're going to do protected parking. But it's important to understand that this project was, was approved for its use. That parking is for our client. We are parked per code. We relied on the general plan. This is, this is the essence of what I want the council, please, to understand. We relied on this general plan when we acquired this property in 2012. The timing is important. 2006, we finalized that general plan. When I say we, there were a lot of citizens involved that supported this effort. In 2006, this project that you're looking at was approved. The expansion of use by Woody's is not consistent with the existing and expected residential character of the area and the relevant policies of the 2006 general plan. The general plan recognizes the needs to protect life and should, protect the quality of life, not protect life, excuse me, protect the quality of life, and should the Planning Commission's decisions stand, it will result in a major adverse economic impact on our project. I pointed out a couple of areas in the Planning Commission. One's important, and I think that the Planning Commission, had they actually really focused on the adjacency of the project, would have had a dramatically different outcome. Councilman, or, excuse me, Commissioner Tucker on page 38 of your package had relevant comments that I'd like to draw your attention to. And finally, I appreciate the time that you've, you've granted us. We would not be opposed, just so Woody's understands. If they wanted to open at 10:00 in the morning, we're not opposed to that. So if they want to go a little earlier, but as to the rest of the conditions, I've, I've stated the case that I believe those to be inconsistent with the general plan, adverse economic, direct impact to this project, and we're excited for this revitalization of Newport. So with that, I'll take any questions.
Solich. Yeah, my understanding is, when this came before the Planning Commission, that Woody's Wharf actually objected to this project, and this project, which you're calling Building H, because you said there's no buffer there, but the Planning Commission did take all this into consideration. They actually required, if I remember correctly, the second and third floors of Building H to be office uses, and yet you haven't mentioned that, or I don't see that reflected in this diagram.
Yeah, I didn't, I don't believe, I don't know that to be accurate, but I don't, I don't have-
If you acquired the property, wouldn't you have checked into that, to see if, you know, if there was going to be a buffer there or not?
I can ask my partner, who actually worked on that transaction. Sure, Commissioner Solich, if you want me to ask about the transaction, I can do that.
And I think also, aren't there conditions that the Planning Commission put on this project, that all of the owners of the residential units be put on notice that they're in a mixed-use area where there's going to be noise and all that kind of stuff?
Of course. Well, mixed uses, the issue before us isn't whether mixed use is the correct approach. Absolutely, those residents will be. The question is, is whether the permit before you is, is, is actually compatible with-
Well, no, I'm just questioning your statement, that the Planning Commission didn't take into consideration buffering, and that there was no buffer-
So let me clarify the point. What I believe the Planning Commission didn't do is the immediate adjacency. I mean, as close as it was, and if it did, then the statement, it's not necessary, actually, for my position, so whether they took into account or not is not important.
Ms. McGregor?
All right. And then, so you are concerned about relieving them of the valet, the valet parking?
Yes. Yes, correct. Well, there's two things, actually, so I can be clear. They have 26, they have 20 spaces, striped spaces, on, on their location currently. Relieving them, the only thing that's before the council now, within the request, is relieving them of the ability to have valet. We're opposed to that. Actually, my position is, is that to relook at, the adjacency of that, that granting of the in-lu spaces is not 100% of the time. It's across the street. And so I think there's going to be an impact on the peninsula that the city will deal with later.
Well, but as far as how it impacts with you, I mean-
The more parking, the more parking they have on their site, the less impact there will be on ours. That's, that's the issue.
I mean, because it seems to me to be unreasonable for you to suddenly ask them to change their parking, or change their parking, well, since there was-
Correct. They've got an approved parking, and the, what's before you is the ability to ask for a waiver.
Right, and that's all we're talking about.
Correct. That's all we're talking about.
All right. Thank you, Mr. McKidrick.
Thank you.
What I'd like to do now is open this up for public comment. I'm going to be very strict about a three-minute requirement for whichever side you're on. So if you want to come down and speak, Mr. Diamond, normally, we don't let people speak twice, but because of the nature of this proceeding, we'll give you a chance at the end, if you'd like, for three minutes, to speak at the end. All right, who would like to speak first? Please come forward.
Good evening. Lori Morris, West Newport. I'm seeing you guys in a while. Nice to see you. You know what I'm saying?
Before you start, Lori, let me point out for the audience that may be concerned, Councilmember Deagle, as you know, is recovering from a bicycle accident. She has been required to leave for the rest of the evening. Please go ahead. I'm sorry.
Thank you. So basically, what I'm hearing from the applicant is, there's, we've always had bad behavior. We want you to codify and continue our bad behavior. We want all of you now to say, "Yeah, we've had our dancing. So what? We want to continue that dancing." As far as I'm concerned, I think that's just a bad policy. You just can't tell people who now want to dance, or want to have loud music, or, you know, that, and they've always done it, just continue to do it. I believe after reading all of the letters that were sent to you, I've read every one of them, dramatic, they gave very good points, things I won't go into because it's so involved. They, I mean, everything that's been brought up is spot-on. You, tonight, have been shown that if you don't go forward with the, what Woody's wants you to, they're going to sue. You've had a threat that, "Try it. They're, they're going to sue you." So you're up against that. I understand that. But we on the peninsula are tired of having to push back against all these alcohol establishments that feel they have the right to overly impact our area. We have been dealing with this for years. Just as Woody's has been there for years, so have we, the residents. And now they want to move this forward and say, "Now let us even get bigger, and more booze, more people, more parking issues." The issue with this back and forth on the dancing, not who's allowed to dance, entertainment, dancing, well, when you allow them to do this, if you do, you're going to have every other bar in the area. We've already had the problem with malarkeys. You're going to have every bar in the area. I've had the party bus put things like this, just destroy my neighborhood with kind of advertisements saying, "Four dollars. We'll bring you down to the peninsula from Huntington Beach and the triangle, and unload every drunk in the world down there, and then we'll come back and pick you all up. Have you just, just had your big old time." So when they say that they're only with people in Newport Beach, you know, the, the regular people around there, no. They're bringing in people from everywhere, from the outside with these party buses. This, and this is why I say that, once you grant this to them, every other bar is going to be right here in front of you, saying, "You gave it to them. Now give it to us." Rudy's, I'm not going to tell you what they're offering, because they have a nice little issue here, that they have DJs and all the booze you can drink, cheap drinks, and go-go dancers. So when you talk about the, the entertainment issue, they've already got their go-go dancers. I don't know if code enforcement knows about it. I speak to Matt Cozine pretty often about these things being littering my neighborhood and going into the bay, and I have to pick him up and call him, and he's great at calling them and saying, "Stop it. Stop doing this." And that's what we're going to continue to see. It's just bad behavior. And I know Woody's has been there. I've been there. I've been there on a boat. And I will object to the fact that they say that they don't serve alcohol. They absolutely do, because I've been on one of those boats when their waitress came down and took my order. I don't go there for dinner anymore. I won't eat there anymore. It's not about their food. It's about how much booze they can push. Thank you.
Thank you, Lori. Next speaker, please.
Members of the City Council, my name is Kent Stoddard, and I live at the 28th Street Marina. Excuse me. We, residents of the 35 homes at the 28th Street Marina, urge you to reverse the Planning Commission's decision and deny Woody's application that would legalize its nightclub operation. Between January 1st, 2012, and July 22, 2013, the police department responded to 157 calls at Woody's. They included 32 fights, 23 disturbances, 12 drunks, and five drunk drivers. These are extremely high numbers, and there is evidence that Woody's is operating primarily as a bar and nightclub, and not as a restaurant. Police Department has stated that Woody's has exhibited a blatant pattern of violations, and that it has become a drain on police resources. Police Department does not recommend approval of this application. Every Friday and Saturday night, after midnight, groups of rowdy, often intoxicated young people roam up and down Newport Boulevard near Woody's. On Saturday night, I saw one young man urinate on a car parked at the curb across from Woody's. One of our neighbors was also recently assaulted in this area. Woody's illegal nightclub operation attracts large numbers of young people in their 20s, and Woody's is often at its maximum capacity level. Further, Woody's serves no food, only alcohol, after 10:00 P.M. This results in its patrons being even more intoxicated when they are all dumped onto the street at 2:00 A.M. Woody's management locks up and goes home, leaving us to deal with the drunks, the vomiting, the public urination, the crime, the yelling, and the profanity. If Woody's operated responsibly as a restaurant, there would be no negative impact on our area. Woody's management admits they are operating as a nightclub, and has adamantly stated, quote, "We have no intention of changing the way we currently operate," end quote. Woody's is not a good neighbor, nor does it have responsible management. Please stop the downward slide of our area caused by too many bars and nightclubs. Planning Commission Vice Chairman Tucker has stated that under the revised general plan, and with the increased number of residents in this mixed-use area, that allowing Woody's to operate as a nightclub is not an appropriate land use. We appeal to you to support the residents and the police department and deny Woody's application. To do otherwise would be to reward Woody's for its flagrant, long-term pattern of deliberate city permit, city ordinance, and ABC violations. Thank you.
Ms. Stoddard, next speaker, please. How many people would like to speak on this tonight, or planning to speak? Why don't you line up in the center aisle, and we'll use both of the podiums. That way, we'll move you all along quicker. Yes, sir.
Joe Balzer, 10-year resident on 24th Street in Newport, corporate counsel. And what I'd like to talk about is something on the positive side. Everything that's been talked about so far seemed very negative to me. One of the things that really attracted me about Newport Beach in the first place is that you have diversity of lifestyle without having to go very far away. If I live in Irvine, I'm very, you know, there's very little diversity. On the peninsula, I have everything that I want. If I want to live where there's a social life, I can live near the pier. If I want to live where it's quiet, I can move 10 streets away either direction. Down by 10th Street, it's very quiet. Down by the wedge, even quieter. If I really want to live in a neighborhood atmosphere where there's no mixed use, I can go up to Newport Heights. I don't have to go very far to get what I want. I have a problem with- what I want. I have a problem with people who move to an area that looks has a certain character. The nightlife in Newport Beach is not new. It's been here forever. I agree with corporate counsel from the project across the street, that it is kind of like a big-picture thing about what kind of character you want. It appears to me from a big-picture standpoint that some of the residents are trying to change it from the character that it's always been into something that it is not, which is like a Dana Point or a very quiet neighborhood. If it were like that, and that was certainly something that everyone agreed was positive, that would be a different story. But it is not a positive to people like me who moved here for the specific reason of wanting a walk-to social life. If I wanted to have to always get in a cab or always get in a bus like he was talking about, then I would have lived someplace else. My renters would go someplace else. All the residents that live from the Fortieth Street up, they would live someplace else. Most of the people moved down here because they wanted a social life and they want to walk to it. It's one of the only places around in Orange County where you can actually walk to your nightlife. You can't do that with the clubs that are by the airport. You can't do that anywhere in Hollywood. This is one of the few places, and I would ask you guys to keep that in mind as you're looking at all this. The parking thing, it has a very simple solution. If it's busy, they need a valet. If it's not busy, they don't. There's no reason to have a valet when it's not busy. It doesn't help anyone, it just drives up someone's cost for no reason. That's it.
Thank you, sir. Come on down, please. And why don't you go to this podium and sir back there, you'll come up here and you'll be ready to go when he's done. And that way we'll move right along. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Larry Edwards. I've lived in Newport Beach since I got out of high school in sixty-three, and I've been going to Woody's since nineteen sixty-five. I'm a retired pilot and I understand noise measurements. I've had to reduce throttles on airplanes not to tick people off in the neighborhoods. And so I understand all that. The project next door is a plus in this town, but they've got to live with Woody's. Woody's was here since nineteen sixty-five. It's unproven how they're going to be as neighbors. They're joining the team here. Woody's is an institution, it's been here, people like to go there. I go there almost every day, and I go there to dance at night. Not every night, but I've never been arrested, never been drunk driving. I get in a cab if I've had more than three drinks, and so be it. But these operators are good operators. They don't steal from the taxes and all that, they're very current with that kind of stuff. I've seen restaurants come and go in this town for fifty years, and they're one of the few that's still here. So it tells you they're doing something right, okay? I don't mean more I can say, they're good operators.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
My name's Norm Einhorn. I live at Twenty-Eighth Street Marina. Mayor Curry and members of the City Council of Newport Beach, when Woody's applied and was granted a restaurant license, not a nightclub license, it was with the understanding they would adhere to the license. To come before the council and blatantly admit that they have been operating illegally for over ten years and request additional time and a dancing permit is unbelievable. Anywhere else, they would have been shut down. Small fines are just treated as a cause for operating illegally. How the council could even consider their request is beyond me. No matter what grant they get, they will pay no attention to it. What's to prevent them from operating twenty-four hours a day or increasing their noise, no one will severely penalize these illegal operators. Newport Beach is a beautiful city. It deserves to have fine shops and quality restaurants, not a string of bars open until two o'clock in the morning. Drunks staggering out, noise, fights, let's put Balboa back on the right path and deny the illegal operation. Please remember, the police responded to one hundred and fifty-seven calls from one-one, two thousand and twelve to July twenty-second, two thousand and thirteen. This included thirty-two fights, twenty-three disturbances, twelve drunks and five drunk drivers. The police think they should be denied their request and so do their neighbors. Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name's Joe Reese. Hello, Mayor Curry and councilmembers. Thank you for finding me to speak. I'm going to bring up what Lori brought up, and that has to do with Rudy's. And why I bring that up is because what it says on Rudy's flyer, and these were all put on our cards in our neighborhood, I live here on the peninsula, and it says every Thursday night from ten PM to close, DJs and go-go dancers. That was stated earlier. Why that's important is I did talk with Matt Coziline, and Matt Coziline said that they are not allowed to do that at their business. They don't, not allowed to have DJs or go-go dancers at their business. However, they advertise this. This isn't the first time this advertisement has occurred. I'm sure you've heard about it before and others have heard about it also. It's a repeat, repeat behavior by them. Several months ago, I called the police department because they had a band on top of the roof of Rudy's. And we're not here to talk about Rudy's, but we're here to talk about the practice that happens with these bar establishments. Several months ago, I called the police department because El Ranchito was starting to close at eight o'clock at night unless you were twenty-one and over. Well, they're no longer a restaurant, they're turning into a bar at that point. They're not complying with the rules are as far as what they signed up for in the first place. And that's a, a repeat problem that we see all over our peninsula with our alcohol establishments. And it's now where the residents and the city are working together jointly to deal with these issues and to get them under compliance. And what is really disappointing is, we went and met last week with the owners and Mr. Potts and talked about the issues at Woody's and what's going on and so forth. And what they told me is in two thousand and six, they applied for a dance permit with the city. They came back in two thousand and twelve and reapplied for a dance permit with the city. They also told us, even though the city had told them at eleven o'clock at night they're supposed to be closed in the patio, they continued to keep it open till two AM. And it is true that they are blatantly ignoring everything that the city, the restrictions, the police department, the planning department, even the residents are telling them that they want them to stay within the bounds. They continue to ignore that and do what they want. And then, I believe, the city and the reason why they denied their permit was because it wasn't following the general plan. And the general plan in two thousand and six says really clearly for mixed use. It says that mixed-use housing with retail uses including retail offices, restaurant and similar non-residential uses, for mixed-use structures, commercial uses, characteristics by noise, vibration, odors and other activities that would adversely impact onsite residential units are prohibited. It shouldn't exist. They shouldn't be there. We are seeing a change in this community. We see it going in the right direction. This is going backwards, going in the wrong direction. And finally, what is the difference between the calls for service, one hundred and fifty-seven that occurred at Woody's? Look at Rudy's, look at Malarkey's, look at Newport Bruco. And what you will see is you won't see one hundred and fifty-seven calls for service. I'm not saying that these are ideal establishments, they have their own issues. There's a young crowd that goes, that gets bussed to, and these buses and, and the taxis, that gets bussed to Woody's to go there. And that's what the dancing issue is causing.
Thank you, Joe. Yes, sir.
My name is Michael Lamb. I'm a physician and I live in one of the condos. I'm a relatively new resident in Newport Beach. And I came to Newport Beach looking for a good, quiet environment within a retail residential mix. I invite any one of the council members or staff to come up to my condo and just spend a night. It'll be very quiet up to about twelve o'clock, and then the party begins. Now, I cannot say it's a hundred percent from Woody's, but I've stand on the, my patio balcony many times, hear direct noise. Just because the noise is not sixty dB does not mean that is not noise. To split here between sound and noise is ludicrous to me. As a common resident, that's all I'm here to say. As far as what I hear today, I'm quite shocked. In a civilized country like this, there's intimidation to the city council to either act in accordance to the will or face legal action. Anyway, I'd like to encourage the honorable council members and councilwomen to act in accordance to what is best for the residents. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Yes, sir.
Yes, Mayor Curry and councilmembers, my name is Dennis Halloran. I'm a retired certified financial planner. I first came to the Balboa Peninsula during World War II, nineteen forty-three to be exact. My dad was in charge of the USO on the Balboa Peninsula. And as a young squirt, I lived just behind Christian's Hut. So I know what it's like to live in a mixed-use area, starting from a young age. I moved to the Twenty-Eighth Street Marina twelve years ago on retirement after a thirty-year career in syndication and investments. I did my due diligence. I determined that I could live with bars and restaurants and their occasional noise as I relished the fact that I could walk to the ocean. I could walk to my church, Our Lady of MacCarmel. I could walk to my yacht club, American Legion. I could walk to my gym at Curl. And shopping, there's no Richards anymore, but we still have one market there. Zoning restrictions and the most recent general plan update also gave me comfort in my decision to do that twelve years ago. My, how things have changed. You have lots of code problems, as you all know. The noise, the foul language, the urination, vomit, make it unwise to venture out after ten PM with family or visitors. Don't add an approved nightclub operation. It's inappropriate, not conducive to the quality of life for residents. You have in front of you compelling evidence to keep Woody's as a restaurant. Is it only Woody's? No. But you must halt expansion. Thanks for caring about the local residents and please support denial of extended hours and patio dancing in this residential area.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Honorable mayor and honorable members of the City Council, my name is Tom Durant. I'm coming to you from the Twenty-Eighth Street Marina. I wanted to make it crystal clear what our position is. We don't have a problem with Woody's the restaurant. We do have a problem with Woody's the illegal nightclub operation. According to the general plan that you folks have established, a mixed-use area, not to keep pounding this into the ground, but it's supposed to be highly livable. Our place is no longer highly livable. I, you know, have wondered if any of you folks besides Councilman Han have went down there from twelve to three o'clock in the morning during the weekends and seen what a real war zone we have. It's, it's totally out of control. The noise, the, the public urination, we have to go out and, and actually clean up vomit on our places that come from these type of establishments. This is, why do we have to be subjected to that? That's, that's not fair. I implore you to, to help us in this fight and let's move forward with the, with the peninsula in the right direction. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Good evening, mayor and members of the City Council. I had two things I was going to ask you tonight or comment on tonight, but I've been listening to proceedings. I'm going to change what I want to say. I am also a owner in Twenty-Eighth Street Marina, and first of all, I want to refute Mr. Diamond's contention that there are just a few people in the Marina that do not like what Woody's has been doing. I challenge you to have a ballot, and I doubt if you will find one person who is not in favor of you reversing this planning commission decision. The other point is, I'm an original owner. I came here over twenty years ago, fully understanding that this was a mixed-use area. I considered that to be a compact with the city. We would live here, we would work with the businesses here, support them, and I expected the city to support me by making sure that the businesses behaved. I was the first president of the association and I worked with several businesses on noise and trash issues, and they were all amicably resolved, but this issue with Woody's has not been that way, and I do not understand why we have not been supported in having the ordinances that they are supposed to be working under upheld. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Greg Pappas, one of the owners of Woody's Wharf. I want to make some things clear here, and I don't want to take up too much of your time, but the reason why we do how we operate Woody's today is because we feel we have the legal right. We did our due diligence prior to buying Woody's. And through our due diligence, through the conditional use permit, we thought we had legal rights. Based on those legal rights, that's why we're doing it. I don't want to come across as we don't care. We hear that a lot. We run it without any concern of the neighbors. Nothing would be further from the truth. We even reached out to the Twenty-Eighth Street Marina. We even offered to help pay for security guard. The reason why we did that is because we witnessed things at the Twenty-Eighth Street Marina. There's some things that we don't care to see. I am a resident. When I lock up, I go to my house. I live in Newport Beach. So the issues that are foreigner us are concerning all of us. But our issue is, is don't blame because buses bus people into the city, you blame on Woody's. On the Twenty-Eighth Street Marina, I think there was things that we could have done, again, with the security guard. We offered to help pay for it. Last Friday we met, I asked the Twenty-Eighth Street Marina, why didn't you, why you guys never hire this security guard as, as you told us you would when we met back in the spring? The response was, the homeowners association didn't think it was needed. Well, I don't know what that means. Obviously, I didn't, they're telling us there's a concern with nuisance, and then they're, they're telling us that there's not.
I don't think you've very well explained why they would run a security guard.
I'm sorry?
I don't think you've explained very well why they might, what a security guard would do.
Well, I, I think it's, in my opinion, some of the things that we witnessed, they've talked about, public urination and other issues, we've witnessed some of this stuff. I don't know where these people are coming from. They can be coming from a house party, they could be coming from, from anywhere. We've witnessed this and we think it should stop. Simple. And I think it's an easy solution. The easy solution is, is hire a security guard at a minimum cost that we would have helped to assist. There's certain things that we could do to help protect our, our community, pretty minor, simple things. One of the things that I wanted to bring up too was the outdoor dining permit. There was never an outdoor dining permit in the file, period. So when we had our meeting with the, the planning department, police department, all that, they, they did due diligence like we did. They came back exactly with the same finding, the patio could stay open until two o'clock. We met with the original developer next door. We had concerns with the project. We simply told them redesign the building closest to us, make it all commercial. I'm not an architect, I'm not a developer, but I thought that made, that made some, some logical sense, which they decided not to. He said the cost didn't make sense for them to change it at this point. We do care. We're, we're here to reach out to you guys. We reached out to our neighbors. We're willing to meet with them at any point to do whatever we can to resolve this. We feel we have a right to operate the way we are. That's the only reason why we're operating. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Weatherholt?
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. Drew Weatherholt, I'm a resident, twenty-year resident of District Fifteen. I wish to express my opposition to Woody's Wharf's requested operational changes to make this restaurant more of a nightclub. Dancing and extended hours of the outdoor dining area, which basically turns into a bar at the late hours, will only continue to add problems. One of the biggest problems with these operators is that they cannot control their patrons after they leave the establishment. Hiring a security guard next door may mitigate an issue there, but it doesn't mitigate the issues within District Fifteen. This area clearly does not need continued intensification of problematic bars, let alone a problematic nightclub-style bar slash restaurant. It's clearly been illustrated that Woody's only continues to be in violation with the city and a drain on police services. This type of use is incompatible with the general plan for the area and will only continue to be more incompatible with the general plan as the peninsula continues to redevelop. It seems that the Woody's Wharf business model is becoming very dated, and perhaps they're trying to revive their profit by increasing alcohol sales and allowing dancing. The problem with this is that their profit comes off the backs of the residents and the communities and the, and the associated negative impacts attributed to this type of operation. Woody's is supposed to be a restaurant with a bar, not a bar and a nightclub. I would encourage the operators to make a better restaurant and not a bar nightclub. A perfect illustration would be the Canary Restaurant. The Canary Restaurant was rebuilt from the Western Canaries Company in nineteen seventy-three into a waterfront restaurant. The owners have only continued to improve the restaurant operations there with the best restaurateurs and significantly remodeled the property. The Canary has a bar, but it isn't the problem that Woody's has become. The Canary has changed with the times, Woody's has not. And judging from the appearance of Woody's, it doesn't appear that they've remodeled the property since the seventies with its rock lava roof. The Canary is a successful restaurant that also closes no later than eleven PM. Woody's closes at two PM. Woody's answers to their economic concerns and profit is not more alcohol and dancing to the detriment of the peninsula. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
Hi, my name is Brian Park. I'm a homeowner and a resident on the peninsula, and I'm opposed to the Woody's application. I got two main concerns. The first is, I see the peninsula moving in a really positive direction with the new The first is, I see the peninsula moving in a really positive direction with the Newport Marina project, with the hotel development that's on its way, with the landing reface and all the different retail that's been going into there. It's a real positive development and a great step in the right direction. Phil, that Woody's is not being, as Drew just said, moving with the times and moving in a positive direction with the rest of the peninsula, and that bothers me. The second issue I wanted to raise with you guys is, I'm a long-term resident in various mixed-use areas. I've lived in various parts of Los Angeles, in Santa Monica, Venice Beach. I'm used to mixed-use residential. I love it. That's why I moved to the peninsula. There's a big difference, though, with the way that the bars on the peninsula operate in the mixed-use versus other areas I've lived in. Other areas I've lived in have tons of bars, restaurants, and patrons, but I haven't seen the same level of rampant destruction of neighborhoods. In my area of the peninsula, which is very close to the Woody's as well, as well as JU's, you see folks walking through all the time after the bars close, just completely intoxicated, throwing up on everyone's houses, throwing things. Just this morning, I found broken bottles of beer in the immediate area in front of my house. I usually see the pizza slices as well. But you're basically seeing a lot of destruction. I've actually seen parts of my own fence in my front yard broken with people who have fallen over. My wife, she's had her car dented by people who've literally fallen over, and I come in the morning, help them up so they can get into a cab and get out of there. But basically, the point being, though, is that a lot of the bars, including Woody's, are releasing a ton of people out there who are just inebriated and a destructive path, and this is only going to contribute to that, especially in the face of all this great positive development. So it's somewhat of a mixed message you're sending to the Newport community and to the larger business world. And I would urge you to please reverse the planning commission and decide with the residents on this. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, seeing no further speakers, Mr. Diamond, either you or your client, would you like, somebody can have three minutes to?
I'll share it with Mark. A lot of the complaints that were just-
Three minutes, Tom.
A lot of the complaints that were just espoused here did not directly relate to Woody's, but just were complaints in general about bars. It seems to me it's unfair at a hearing involving Woody's Wharf to have speakers come here and speak about other bars, such as Rudy's or other things. You have to make specific findings, and the findings have to be based upon evidence, and the evidence has to relate to Woody's Wharf, not to other people. Woody's Wharf wants to put the roof on the patio. It needs permission from the city to do that. This is a narrow issue regarding noise. The two studies that have been made show there was no discernible sound that would be affecting neighbors. That's been laid to rest. So when these people and the one gentleman said that after midnight he hears noise, it's not coming from Woody's. Why would you blame Woody's for something that's being done by somebody else? Mark, do you want to finish up? So it's like a trial where the witness comes forward and says the defendant, well, we don't know whether he shot the person, somebody else shot him. Well, we're the ones who are on trial, so all of this evidence about other people making noise or bars being used to bus in people from other parts of the city or the county has nothing to do with Woody's. Mark?
Got about a minute and a half, Mark.
I just wanted to respond. We do our nightly checks at 28th Street Marina. We see lots of stuff going on. They've got picnic tables. I see people gathered around those picnic tables with a 12-pack of beer, with a boombox. Saturday night, I witnessed a tenant in the 28th Street Marina building that had a party going on in the street. Six people out there drinking beers out of an ice chest. They were tenants in that building. We see a lot of stuff going on that could be prevented with a security guard walking through there. We've offered to help fund that. You know, we're asking for much less than others have been granted in the area. Other people have seven days dancing. We're asking for three. Someone talked about fines. We've never been fined for dancing, for occupancy, for any of that kind of thing, so I don't know where that's coming from. Flyers, I want to make it clear, that's Rudy's that's doing the flyers, not Woody's with a W, Rudy's with an R. We don't do any of these party buses. There are other people on the peninsula that do those party buses and bring people in. We've never done that. To clear one thing up, dancing, per city code, no permit is required if you charge a cover charge. Again, the disclosures for the new project next to us, they're disclosing that traffic noise is going to be 70 decibels from the street. We're not asking for an expansion. We're not. We're not going to do anything new or anything different. We're not asking for an expansion. Thank you.
Thank you. Seeing no further public comment, I'm going to close public comment, bring it back to the City Council. Mr. Hen.
Mayor, yeah. First, I have a quick question about something that was just said. If you charge a cover, you're not required to get a permit for dancing? Is that true?
Cafe dance permit has an exemption for what is defined as dance halls. And dance halls are facilities that charge a cover, and therefore, they're not required to have a cafe dance permit.
But is that provision applicable to the situation here with Woody's?
In this case, they still are required to get an amendment for the use permit to have dancing because they're looking for a modification of their floor plan. So a use permit amendment is required, and if that use permit is approved, we recommend that the condition be included that requires a cafe dance permit.
Okay. Thank you. Well, I'm going to take a few minutes here and try to summarize this situation, and then I'll make a motion. So with the indulgence of my fellow council members and those in the audience, let me just make a few comments. I generally respect our planning commission. I think they do a good job. And by and large, I don't find much fault with the decisions that they make. But this time, I think they got it exactly, completely wrong, for reasons that I'll enumerate in a minute. At the conclusion of my remarks, I will be moving to overturn substantial portions of the planning commission decision. I'd like to start, though, with enumerating some factors that do not affect my decision, that were not germane to my decision, and I think generally should not be. There's been a wide variety of objections to Woody's that have been expressed by the residents, and while I respect all of those comments that have been made, you know, I want to be clear of what the basis for my decision-making is. First, I am not biased about this situation. I've been on City Council for seven years. I was on the planning commission for a year and a half before that. I was on the planning commission when the Newport Marina project was approved, by the way. And my recollection is that there was some discussion of buffer. My recollection is also, though, that there was an assumption that Woody's would be operating within its use permit when that project was approved. Now, so I have no bias in this situation. I'm not against nightclubs or businesses that have operating characteristics like nightclubs, even in Newport Beach. I wouldn't care to admit the number of times I've seen the sun come up after a night of revelry, sometimes in a nightclub in the United States and elsewhere in the world. I like to have fun, too. I also like Woody's, which in all respects is an icon on the peninsula, no doubt, and a business that I believe deserves to continue in operation on the peninsula. But this is not about whether this location should be technically classified as a nightclub or a restaurant. It is about extending the hours of operation for a portion of the restaurant, of the business, allowing dancing, the combination of which change and intensify the operating characteristics of this business, and has a nightclub-like impact on the area. My job, I believe all of our jobs up here, is to decide where and when these kinds of businesses should operate in our city, and that's what we're about. Second, I am for good, quality restaurants on the peninsula, including restaurants that serve alcohol, including hard liquor, as long as their primary operating characteristics are focused on the service of food and being a restaurant. Third, I don't believe that the issue of noise inside the confines of Woody's is germane to our decision tonight. Honestly, I don't. I think that whole issue is pretty much a red herring. I'm not surprised the noise surveys showed that, you know, the noise generated by Woody's, and there is noise generated by Woody's, it's just not noise that apparently is detectable above the ambient noise levels surrounding Woody's or perhaps emanating from other areas. But it's most certainly not a case of there not being noise generated by Woody's. But even so, it's not about noise. Woody's has an obligation, just like every other restaurant and every other business in Newport Beach, to comply with our municipal code that limit the emanation of noise from their businesses. And they've got that obligation whether or not these intensification requests are approved, whether or not they put a roof on. They've still got the same level of obligation to not be overly noisy. And so I don't regard that as an issue germane to the decision before us tonight. What is germane about the decision tonight is the intensification of what goes on outside the restaurant, outside the property limits, when more patrons, who are allowed to be at the premises as a result of the proposed modifications, leave all at once or substantially at once very late at night, who are often inebriated, engage in loud, raucous, disrespectful behavior, including lording, littering, urination, fights, et cetera, and crimes that are well documented by the police department and by the residents. Often, these are behaviors that cannot be controlled by a particular operator, and they don't necessarily happen on the operator's premises. So I don't pin that exclusively on Woody's. I don't. But it's a chronic problem in the area, and all the operators in the area share some piece of ownership in these kinds of problems. Fourth, the operating characteristics of American Junkie, the business next door, are not, in my opinion, determinative or perhaps even germane to what's going on with this application. This application is about the Woody's location and what should or should not be allowed to be done at that location in the future. This is not a backward-looking decision-making process here. If the American Junkie location came before us with the same set of issues, I would have the same set of concerns about that location, too. Some may argue, and this is the last point, about what's not a factor in my decision. Some may argue that the application of the operator license requirement, this is a new thing that we've put together and I supported it, that operator's license is issued by and governed independently by the police department. Some might argue that that favors approval of the Woody's request. The application of the operator's license, in my opinion, however, is not a reason to support the Woody's application. We should not make a bad decision, and then that is a bad one because it is not supported by the laws and regulations of our city, and then look to the police department to fix the problems from that bad decision through increased enforcement oversight. That just doesn't make any sense. So, on to the factors that do affect my decision. First, it was implied by one of the speakers that this is a quote-unquote "political decision", like that's some sort of a dirty untoward thing. This is a political body here. We do have to be concerned with making political decisions. However, I actually agree that this should not be a politically-based decision. It's a decision that should be made on the basis of compliance with laws and regulations and general plan, as well as the public's welfare, safety, and well-being. So first, there's a few areas, a few items that I think should be approved, and I think allowing Woody's to open at 10:00 AM is appropriate because there aren't the same kind of impacts associated with letting them open earlier that we're worried about when they stay open a lot later. And secondly, I think the variance to allow the enclosure probably would assist in reducing noise levels, and honestly, there is noise that's generated in the establishment, and if that can be reduced, that's great. Okay, so now I'd just like to take a few more minutes to enumerate why I think council should overturn the remainder of the planning commission's decisions. This city went through an intensive, lengthy public process, most of the people sitting on this dais were heavily involved in that process, to adopt a new general plan in 2006 that changed the designation of this and other areas to mixed use, with a residential component involved with that designation. Our general plan policies are very clear that with this change, the residential quality of life must trump, must trump other use considerations that are potentially in conflict. And I'm just going to take a minute and read what I think are three of the key general plan policies associated with this situation. These are policies dealing with mixed-use districts. Land Use Goal 5.3. Districts for residents and businesses are intermixed that are designed and planned to ensure compatibility among the uses, that they are highly livable for the residents, highly livable for residents, and are of high-quality design reflecting the traditions of Newport Beach. Land Use Policy 2.6, Visitor Serving Uses. Provide uses that serve visitors to Newport Beach's ocean, harbor, open spaces, and other recreational assets while integrating them to protect, integrating them to protect neighborhoods and residents. And then Policy N 1.7, Commercial/Entertainment Uses. Limit hours and/or require attenuation of commercial/entertainment operations adjacent to residential and other noise-sensitive uses in order to minimize excessive noise to these receptors. These policies taken together make it very clear to me that our general plan intends that residential quality of life trumps conflicting business purposes that have operating characteristics in conflict with them. All right. So, in my view, these policies clearly command a prohibition of nightclub-like operating characteristics. We must respect the letter and intent of our general plan, and the planning commission did not give sufficient weight to this in their decision. To approve the planning commission decision would simply be bad policy, inconsistent with the general plan. Based thereon, I cannot make the first finding that the proposed modification of the use of the property is consistent with the general plan. That first finding that I reference is in the municipal code, Section 20.52.020, and that first finding says, "The use is consistent with the general plan and any applicable specific plan." There's another provision in that same section F, the findings that are required, and this is finding number three. "The design, location, size, and operating characteristics of the use are compatible with allowed uses in the vicinity." It is very clear to me that while there is an adjacent commercial use that has similar operating characteristics, which is the American Junkie, the guiding consideration must be to give the most weight to adjacent residential use. By the way, this is not a use that's 100 feet away, as mentioned in the staff report at one point. This property line is two feet away. This simply cannot be ignored, and the planning commission failed to give this adequate weight. Dancing, the removal of chairs or tables after 10:00 PM, and hours to 2:00 AM on the patio will result in more customers at later hours, more people drinking, and more people dumping out into the neighborhood after 2:00 AM, in many cases, doing the things so starkly enumerated in the police department report and by the residents in the area. So in addition to making a bad decision, we would violate not only the provisions of our general plan, but the requirements of our municipal code. Third, and speaking of the police department report, it is abundantly clear from the statistics that relate directly to the Woody's location itself that this has been a problem location in recent years. Just a few statistics. You've heard this earlier, 157 calls to Woody's for service in a 19-month period, a recent 19-month period. 32 calls for fights, 23 calls for disturbances. These statistics abundantly confirm the concerns raised by nearby residents. These people are not dreaming these problems up. And they abundantly underscore the threat to public safety and the disproportionate use of police resources associated with late-night operations at this location. These statistics simply cannot be ignored. Why in the world would we vote to intensify the use and extend the hours for a portion of a restaurant at a location that has demonstrated these kinds of impacts in the past? The answer is, we can't. Fourth, parking. I do not- Fourth, parking. I do not see any justification for the relaxation of the parking requirements for this location. Based on what we have heard tonight, and in my own observations, of which there have been many, parking at this location is deficient. On Friday and Saturday nights, as I mentioned in my questioning earlier, I see cars stacked up in the eastbound and westbound lanes, wanting to get into the parking lot, causing traffic problems, double parked in lanes, a few times trying to back out, because there's no room to go anywhere once they get in the parking lot. And that's with valet service. The code requirements for 40 spaces, they're asking to be required to only have 20 stripe spaces on-site, and to be left with the operator's discretion whether valet services are needed. This is in the face of potential contention with the new residential complex just a few feet away to the east, and the temptation to use the parking spaces in that facility by Woody's patrons. This simply makes no sense to me. Fifth, and last, as many of my constituents know, and as my colleagues on this dais know, for the past seven years I have been on council, I've been fighting as hard as I can and in as many ways as I can to improve the quality of life for residents of the peninsula. The approval of requested nightclub-like operating characteristics contradicts everything I and our voters, and I believe our city council, believed was appropriate and intended when the voters approved the general plan. It must be denied. To put it simply, we must respect our general plan. We must respect our municipal code. We must respect the safety and quality of life of our residents, and we must largely reject the planning commission approval of Woody's requests. In conclusion, therefore, let me drop back to one other thing. In my seven years on council, I've been questioned many times, this is just back to the bias issue, I'm sorry, it just kind of popped into my head again. I've been questioned many times by reporters who call me on a particular item of, you know, controversy at council, and they call me ahead of the council meeting and say, "Well, how are you going to vote on this issue? You know, don't you feel strongly about this? What's your vote going to be? You know, I heard you say this or that. What's your vote going to be?" I have, without fail, told those reporters and everyone else that I've been associated with for seven years on city council, I do not make my decision on this dais until the night of the meeting on the basis of everything I've heard. Because I've learned, for good reason, things come up at these council meetings that I wasn't aware of, didn't anticipate, new facts, new views, new insights, that sometimes change my mind for something that I think I might vote a certain way and decide to vote a different way. That's the way I do it, without fail, Mr. Diamond. So, with that, I'll suggest to you, sir, that you get a better understanding of the purposes of the meetings that we're at in terms of what's the subject matter to be discussed next time you come here. But, in any event, in conclusion, therefore, I move that staff be instructed to bring back to council at its next regularly scheduled meeting the appropriate resolution and findings to support the following. Number one, that Woody's request to extend the opening hour to 10:00 a.m. from the current 11:00 a.m. be approved. Number two, that the variance is needed to allow for construction of the more permanent roof structure be approved. Number three, that the valet parking service, the current requirement for valet parking service, be modified to require a valet parking service from 6:00 p.m. to closing on Friday and Saturday nights and holidays. That's a relaxation of the current requirement, but it seems to me appropriate in view of what I know to be the case, which is that there's rarely a parking problem at Woody's during the day. And number four, that all other aspects of the planning commission's decision be overturned, including the dance permit request, the extension of hours to 2:00 a.m. on the patio, the discretion as to the use of valet services, and to the extent appropriate in view of item number three, which is the valet service change I made, the waiver of the six parking spaces, not quite sure how that figures in for a partial requirement of valet service, so you guys figure that out. And the ability to remove tables and chairs from any section of the restaurant after 10:00 p.m. And number five, that the additional requests made by Woody's owners at this meeting tonight also be rejected. So, that's my motion.
I'll second that. Discussion?
Yeah, we've had a statement that Patrick offered. When he looked back into it, he found that the permit allowed the use of the patio until 2:00 a.m. Nobody else has seemed to find that, but could we at least clarify with Patrick what his memory of that is?
Yes, I will.
Thank you. And then, I'm glad that Mike talked about the general plan. I was involved in creating the vision statement. And this was something of, I don't know, maybe a page and a half in which a committee worked on every word. And one of the big debates was how do we list everything? And if you go through the general plan, you will notice it says, "Residents, Businesses, Visitors," because there was a very strong philosophy behind that. First come our residents. Our businesses are important, but our residents, if it's a tipping point, it's towards the residents. And for that reason, I also will support the motion.
Mr. Selich.
Yeah, could we hear from the applicant in terms of whether they agree with Councilman Hen's recommendation? I think I know the answer, but typically, we allow the applicant the ability to address modifications to conditions.
I'll have my client come forward also to confirm. I don't believe it would make sense for my client to put a roof over the patio if there's no purpose. That was basically a concession to get approved with respect to the other issues. There's no purpose by itself in putting an expensive cover, since a noise study showed there was no discernible noise anyway. So, I believe it would be the position of my client, that no roof will be put on the patio. So, it's really sad that the neighbors are being deprived of the opportunity to have something that would improve a situation. So, like so many things in government, you have unintended consequences that make the situation worse than it was without the vote. So, Mr. Hen, we don't really agree that the deck should be covered. And as I understand the vote, there's no order that it be done. That was simply a willingness of my client to do something, to try to solve a problem that some people felt existed. As far as your decision on how you vote, you read from a prepared motion. You obviously didn't write that after the public meeting was over. You obviously wrote your motion earlier. I also resent the fact that you call attention to me. I'm simply an advocate here for a client. But, it's clear to me, based upon reading the Ninth Circuit decision, it's clear to me how you operate. And I think it's obvious to anybody. You wrote down that motion before the meeting began tonight. You read from your motion. But enough said about that. I don't want this to be a personal attack. But I do urge the voters to read the opinion of the Ninth Circuit, very critical of Councilmember Hen for masterminding and concocting a plan to get rid of something which was approved by the state legislature.
That, sir, is also totally irrelevant to this proceeding.
Not, it may be irrelevant, but it's true.
Thank you, Mr. Diamond.
Hey, Mr. Mayor, I'm not going to support the motion. I have strong concerns about this. Mr. Hen's statements are very nice statements if we were looking at a use that we're looking at from scratch. But, the fact of the matter is, is that Woody's Wharf has been here since the '70s. It's been operating in this manner. The city has knowingly allowed them to operate in this manner. I think there's some liability on our part for doing so, and I think that we should be working towards some kind of a compromise here and not just an outright denial of this project somewhere. We've always seemed to find compromises that work for us and work for the applicants, and to just take an outright denial here doesn't make any sense to me. And it seems to me we should be working to some kind of compromise. We've gone down this litigation road with Newport Brewing Company, with Josh Slocum's. We lost both times, and, you know, I fear that if we don't come up with some kind of compromise, we're going to be in the same situation here. So, I'm not going to support the motion.
Thank you, Mr. Selich. Let me, we have representatives of the Newport Beach Police Department here. You all have been cited, your name has been taken during various times during the course of tonight's discussion. Does anyone from the police department like to comment about the operations and your opinion about them and the impact on law enforcement challenges on the peninsula?
Yes, sir, and thank you very much. Captain Dale Johnson with the Newport Beach Police Department. I'd like to just reference a report that I believe each of you have, which is a memorandum written July 22nd of 2013 authored by Detective Randy Parker and countersigned by myself. It lays out, you've referenced the report on a couple of occasions, so I think you have a lot of this information already. But, for the record and response, I'll go over it quickly because a lot of it is ground that you've already discussed. We did not recommend, and it's clear in the report, that we made a recommendation not to support the applicant in this particular endeavor. There are a variety of different reasons, which I'll just touch on very, very quickly. One is really not Woody's fault, and it's the location. That area, reporting District 15, is an area which is, you know, already heavily utilized by licensed establishments. In fact, there are 72 licensed, ABC-licensed establishments in that reporting district. That breaks down to roughly one per 44 residents in the area. It just is, in many, many ways, a very, very difficult area that provides a lot of challenges to policing in general, and expansion, and a change in the operational characteristics of Woody's Wharf. We believe we'll just add to those challenges for reasons that have been enumerated here several times already today. Secondly, the calls for service that have been referenced also. We do respond to Woody's. It is, to be fair, that location and that 167 calls, those are all not calls specifically about Woody's, but those are times that we end up at the Woody's location. Sometimes those are car stops in the parking lot that really aren't impacted by Woody's, and sometimes they are bar checks that are officers self-initiate. They don't include all calls from service for the public directly to Woody's Wharf. That being said, so far this year, we have responded to 47 calls for service specifically concerning incidents and things which are occurring at Woody's, whether they be, and there's a myriad of reasons, again, which have been enumerated today, and that are fairly consistent with many other licensed establishments. Third is the nature of change, which has been touched on already. We do believe that to change the conditions very clearly takes it to much more of a nightclub environment. We have some experience with that, if you can remember the Thunderbird, the Warehouse, and it really does provide a different environment to that area late in the evening at a time where the primary purpose of the establishment at that point is to sell alcohol. And it does have a negative impact on our ability to police that area and to do so effectively, particularly in an area which is already so heavily impacted. And lastly, from the police department, the reason why we withheld our recommendation just has to do with a lack of compliance by the operators. We've had numerous meetings going back to 2009 with the operators, in which we made it very clear that that patio closed at 11 o'clock. We've done a variety of crime reports and communicated that to them in many, many ways, and we have just, quite frankly, lost confidence that if we were to support this particular motion, that any further issues that came up with additional noise, or occupancy, or anything else that may arise, we've lost confidence that we have the ability to negotiate with them effectively and arrive at some sort of a compromise to ensure compliance for those areas. I'm open to any further discussions, and I know this is ground we've retread, and I'm sorry if I touch on it.
No, that's fine. Thank you very much, Captain.
Yes, sir.
Mayor Curry.
Just a couple of things. One, I want to make it real clear on the notion of the flyers, they don't apply to Woody's. Well, unfortunately, they do. My high-school-age daughters have come home from CDM High School with handbills on their windshields with advertisements of DJ nights at Woody's, specifically at Woody's. So, this notion that it only happens at Rudy's, that's not true. We have, I've had to throw them away and have that type of candid parental discussion in my household about the DJ nights at Woody's and my underage daughter not going to attend. Second, I would disagree with Mr. Diamond about the noise being the sole issue. In fact, the findings on the use permit are very clear that this goes into a whole host of items. And when this does come back, I would hope that we would flesh these out in greater detail regarding the design, location, shape, size. Most importantly, finding F, operation of the use of the location proposed being detrimental to the harmonious and orderly growth of the city, or endanger, jeopardize, or otherwise constitute a hazard to the public convenience, health, interest, safety, or general welfare of persons residing or working in the neighborhood of the proposed use. Clearly, comments made by one of the owners has said that they accept some liability for this and have been willing to pay for guards at Woody's. That, to me, shows some notion that there is a hazard or an endangerment of the public if there's a willingness to pay for security. You wouldn't pay for security if there was no lack of danger. I do believe that there is a compromise, Mr. Selich, and that is to continue to have the historic Woody's operate as it has, a successful restaurant with a bar. That's what the people of the area have grown used to. That's what the patrons have enjoyed for those 50 years, and that's what I think this motion would permit, is the continued operation of a restaurant.
Thank you. Let me say this. First of all, Woody's has been there forever. I've been going there forever. It's a great location, although apparently, unlike Councilmember Hen, I usually finish dinner before the sun goes down, which I recommend to folks.
I'm a slow eater.
I understand. Woody's has been asked to bear the sins of a lot of other places today, which is not fair. But they bear their own sins for what goes on at that facility as well. And I understand in the restaurant-bar business that the golden hour is 12:00 midnight to 2:00 a.m. in terms of selling product and in terms of making money. The problem with that is the tragedy hour begins at 2:00 a.m. when people hit the streets. And the more people that are encouraged to stay there until 2:00 a.m. and then thrown out on the streets encourages, it just increases the odds exponentially, of people who end up dead before the sun comes up, or who end up in jail, or who end up otherwise maimed through a traffic accident or other situation. So, I'm going to support Mr. Hen's motion. I'm hopeful in the time that it takes to come back, perhaps the applicant will have some additional ideas along the lines that Mr. Selich has suggested that they can talk to us about, and we'll see how this issue goes. But, I would, I'm going to be supportive of the motion. With that, if there's no further comments.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to clarify one other thing. I did prepare some remarks before this meeting tonight, because based upon a careful review and my own independent diligence before this meeting started, I thought there was a good chance that I would conclude that I would want to reject at least some portion of the Woody's requests. I did not hear anything at the meeting tonight that fundamentally changed that point of view, although I did hear some things that changed my recommendation and my motion, and I made handwritten changes to this in light of those things that I heard. So, it remains true. I did not decide this before I got in. There was no particular decision, final decision made in my mind about this before I walked in here tonight. And this has been a completely straight-up proceeding, as far as I'm concerned, based on the merits of the issue.
Thank you. Please vote.
With Councilmember Selich voting no, the motion carries four to one.
Thank you. Item nine, please.
Thank you, Mayor Curry, and council members. So, this next item is a proposed sponsorship agreement for the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce and the Commodores Boat Parade. As your council knows, the city has supported the boat parade in years past. The sum has ranged, I need to correct my staff report, it hasn't consistently been $50,000 in cash, but we've given from 30 to 35, and then 50 most recently. In conversations with the Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce, they would like us to continue supporting the boat parade, and are interested in a more longer-term... supporting the boat parade and would, are interested in a more longer-term commitment. It's not common that we do longer-term commitments, but we have done that before. We've done that with groups such as the Newport Ocean Sailing Association, so that it gives them some certainty as to advertising their sponsors and marketing and the city's own support for the event. So with that, I'll, you know, welcome your comments and questions, but the proposal is for four years of support in addition to this year, taking it to 2017, payable, $50,000 per year. It's not paid all at once or all at the end. You do have an amended staff report and an amended recommendation that changes one of the dates in that, so if you are inclined to adopt this, please use those new dates. Thank you.
What is the meaning, reason for the change of date?
There are a few minor modifications related to the status of the Chamber of Commerce and what applicable section was relevant to them. They're all, they're nonsubstantive changes that were made.
Mr. Selich.
Yeah, I'd move approval of the amended staff report on this. I think supporting the boat parade is a great endeavor for us, we've done it before with the Newport to Ensenada race. It's certainly a signature event in our city, and I think it's something that deserves our support, and I have no problem giving a multi-year commitment.
I'll second that.
All right, motion and second.
Just a question. Do we really have over five nights, a million visitors, 250,000 people, 200,000 people come every night? Really? Really?
Been to Belleble Island?
Yeah, I know how many people come to our beaches during the weekend. Come on, give me a break. I mean, I know we like to put the shine on these things, but...
Quite frankly, I asked, this is Steve Rosansky, I'm president and CEO of Newport Beach Chamber of Commerce. I asked that very same question myself today, because I was a little incredulous. There may be a little bit of puffing there, but clearly, there are hundreds of thousands of visitors that come down every year, not to mention the people watching on TV, who read about it in the newspapers, watch it on national TV. I think it's a national event, so, although I can't substantiate that number, it is a significant amount.
I realize that.
I thought you were going to say 2 million.
I'll leave that to Gary Sherwin.
...gig downstairs.
Any plan of perhaps a period when the city would not have to support it in such a way, it would have more private funding?
Well, you know, I'm not going to talk myself out of a deal here, I have a little prepared speech, but I won't go down that road. I will say, though, that we intend to use the funds to try and elevate even the high stature of the parade, which it is today, to an even higher level. I mean, the parade generates an amazing amount of business in this town, not only for the restaurants, which line the harbor, for the catering companies that come out to people's homes, for the visitors that come from other, outside of town to participate in watching the parade and might spend money at Fashion Island or other places while they're here. We even, I mean, you can ask the visitor bureau people yourself, and there are people who come and stay in hotel rooms here to watch the parade. So although we are at a high level, we think today, we'd still like to try and take that to the next level. And so we, part of the reason for the request and for having the next four years kind of locked up is so that we would know that we have the financial stability to go out and seek additional help with marketing the parade, maybe ultimately someday we'll see the parade on TV like we see the Rose Parade. And so to do that, though, we need to know that, you know, we have our ducks in order, and we appreciate certainly the participation of the city as a sponsor in past years, and we look forward to their continued sponsorship.
Would any of that, of the funding be used to actually evaluate? I know, I mean, I'm from marketing, so I know we're always saying, well, it's this benefit and that benefit, and, oh, the restaurants get a great time, and the catering companies, but we never put any dollars to it. And it'd be interesting to see how you grow it, to actually see if there's any studies, because some of it should be easy to pull out.
Yeah, and I would certainly not be adverse to that, and that's probably, will be part of the marketing plan, is to make sure that we're getting, you know, bang for our buck.
Thank you, Mr. Rosansky.
Mayor Curry, before you let Mr. Rosansky, I can't resist to ask questions, just kind of like karma.
Sure, why not? I love questions.
This year, we're listed as a presenting sponsor.
Yes.
And we don't have, looking through the grant agreement, we don't say how you're going to categorize the city's sponsorship.
It will be the same, presenting sponsor, yeah. We have, actually, this year we'll have four presenting sponsors. We have the city, Newport Beach and Company will be a presenting sponsor, Simple Green and McGuire's Wax, which have been presenting sponsors for a number of years now also.
Any other speakers? Please come forward.
Mayor Curry and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. Yes, this is a signature event, but I am always skeptical about the rationale for giving public money to private organizations, and particularly skeptical when the group promoting free enterprise comes before you, asking for money from the public trough. The grant proposal on the final page of your initial staff report, and I think on the amended one both, is only the sketchiest justification for why the chamber needs $50,000 a year for the next four years and why the city should give it. As far as I know, the chamber charges entry fees, and we just heard that they have corporate sponsors, which means the parade could, for all I know, be a profit-making operation for the chamber, and before approving this, I would have thought that you would at least want to see an itemization of how much it costs to put on the parade and exactly what the $50,000 would be going towards. The agreement being presented here attempts to assure us by saying at the top of Page Two of the agreement that the funds are, the grant funds are going to be expended only on approved uses, and indeed, if it's not all used on the approved uses, that the excess will be returned to the city. But if you look at what the approved uses are, it just refers to Exhibit A. Exhibit A is the vague grant proposal, so apparently it can be spent on anything related to the parade. A few years ago, we were hoping the grants would be used to defray the expenses needed for the special event permit for policing fire, whatever is needed. Now apparently, it could be used on a real blowout of an annual awards party. It also bothers me in the initial staff report, if you look at the beginning of the discussion, it begins by describing this as the Christmas Boat Parade's 105th year. We all, I think, know that that is a myth. According to the chamber's own history, for the first 40 years, the only illuminated boat parade in Newport Beach was a summer event, and the council, in fact, banned that in 1949, according to the chamber's own history, because of the crowds and traffic congestion that it created. But now, 64 years later, we're encouraging crowds and traffic and even airplanes. As vast as the economic benefit this public investment is supposed to return to the taxpayers, I would suspect that that return is also at least as much a myth as the 105 years. Thank you.
Thank you. We'll take note that the Christmas Boat Parade joins the Girl Scouts in your opposition. Are there any other speakers who would like to speak on this matter? All right, seeing none, I'll close public comment, bring it back. Any further comments? Seeing none, please vote.
With Councilmember Daigle being absent and Mayor Protem Hill abstaining, or recusing himself, the motion carries unanimously.
Thank you. Item 10, close-out and final amendment to the construction-at-risk contract for City Civic Center.
Very briefly, Mr. Mayor, you do have a staff report in front of you. This is the closeout of the, construction manager-at-risk contract with CW Driver. The item you have before you that says Attachment One has an additional sentence added to, it looks, it's Part One of the document, you see the underscore there. If you were inclined to support this, we'd like you to include that as an amendment, and certainly welcome any questions you might have.
Is there a motion?
Action.
Motion and second for the amended report. Is there any public comment on this matter? Please come forward.
Mayor Curry and members of the council, my name is Jim Mosher. This seems to be an important thing here, because we're coming to the close of the Civic Center project, and indeed, the city staff has on the city webpage, a page devoted to describing the Civic Center project, its costs and so forth, and we're dealing apparently with one of those, the so-called construction cost now, and we hear all these different numbers. I think this report is saying 179, $107.9 million construction cost, others cost that maybe add up to 131 or 125, blah, 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 don't know quite what is right. I have a few questions about that. On that city webpage, which you find, it was more prominently featured in the past, and as projects come to them, the webpages are actually there, but the links to them become harder and harder to find. You currently have to go on the city's website to where it says Departments, you look under Departments for Public Works, you look under Public Works for Projects, and then you see the Civic Center and Park Project. And it goes into great detail about the costs, and it presents a page here that in addition to a construction item, it has the design competition of 250,000, environmental documentation costs 621, blah, 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 all those things at the time that this was repaired, which I don't know exactly when that was, came to 125 million or something like that, but we hear maybe it's 131. I would like a clarification of exactly what number in this table it is that is now being changed to 107.9 or whatever it is. And I'd also like to know if this table on the page is sometime going to be updated with the final closing figures, so the public can see what those were, whether the page will be preserved in the future as the link gets harder and harder to find, that we can go back and see how much our beautiful new Civic Center cost us. And finally, I'm wondering if in this tabulation, any of this includes the staff costs that went into supporting this project outside of the contracts. Those are my comments. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Seeing none, I'll bring it back to the city council. No questions? Please vote.
The motion carries unanimously, six-zero, with Councilmember Daigle being absent.
Thank you. Item 11. City attorney.
Recently, the city received correspondence alleging that the city violated the Brown Act at the September 2013 meeting by not referencing the closed-session agenda prior to going to closed session, by not stating with specificity what was to be considered in closed session on the agenda, by approving a labor agreement in closed session, and because the mayor was instrumental in conducting labor negotiations. Our offices carefully reviewed each of the allegations, and we don't find any merit to any of the allegations. However, in the interest of avoiding litigation and bearing additional cost and expense associated with this matter, we're urging the city council to adopt basically a letter responding to the person who submitted the allegations, saying that prior to going to closed session, we will reference the closed-session agenda. We find the rest of the claims to be completely without merit, so there's no need to take any action in regards to those.
So, Mr. City Attorney, let me understand this correctly. What's being alleged here is that the language that appears on the front of every one of our agendas, when we go into closed session, you're supposed to read that out loud, and they objected to the fact that you didn't read it out loud?
Well, it's even less than that. We're supposed to reference, we're just reference to it. We don't even have to read the language. In essence, as long as you identify where it is on the paper, then that is what he's alleging was not done. At the last meeting, you did, you know, invite public comment on the closed-session agenda, it is on the written agenda, but the alleged violation is that right before you didn't go into, right before you went into closed session, you didn't, or that I didn't.
You didn't, didn't say the magic words.
Didn't say the magic words.
So we received this complaint, and you've had your attorneys research it and look at it, and then we've had to agendize this for the council meeting, and the city clerk had to prepare documents for this. How much money did we spend responding to this complaint?
You know, I don't have as good of an estimate as the fees for fire at earlier, but I would say it's probably at least $1,500 if you calculate all the staff time and other costs associated with it.
$1,500 to respond to this complaint that you didn't read the words off of...
At the city attorney's open government training session earlier this year, Mr. Torres, who I believe is the one who wrote the report, made the point that the Brown Act is not a gotcha statute, but rather a guide to good sense, good common sense government. In my view, this new system of making written commitments to adhere to agreed-to policies, which should not require very much financial investment on the part of the city, is a welcome opportunity to do even better. In the staff report, the city attorney focuses on the single concern I raised in my two-page letter, which I sent to the clerk on September 17, namely the need to consistently announce the closed-session topics you were meeting to discuss. Whether or not the Brown Act required that, I think, and I hope you would agree, that letting the public know what you're talking about is good public policy. What bothers me is that the city attorney did not choose to share with you or with the public the letter that the commitment letter responds to, because I made not one, but four requests, and it would have been very helpful to see them in context. My four suggestions, since you have apparently not seen the letter, is one, that all closed sessions in Newport Beach preceded by the oral announcement required by the Brown Act, which by the way, requires that when you're going into labor negotiations, you make a separate announcement identifying who your negotiators are. Even the Daily Pilot had trouble figuring out who you were meeting with. Number two, that the announcement, both orally and printed in the agenda, disclosed the subject matter of the closed session with enough specificity that the public can provide meaningful comments, because you asked for public comment. I would think we should know what we're being asked to comment on, and that presupposes that you will make the announcement before, rather than after you invite the public comment. Number three was a request that the council members refrain from negotiating with the public employee groups, other than at noticed public meetings or at the closed sessions permitted under the Brown Act, which are closed sessions, not to negotiate on your own, but to negotiate through your negotiators, who are supposed to be orally announced before that meeting. And the fourth request or concern was that all labor and employment contracts requiring council approval receive their final approval in open session. I think those are all good public policies, and I would wish you, consider committing to them seriously.
Thank you, Mr. Mosher. Is there any other public comment on this? I thought not. Okay, is there a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'm not going to make a motion, but I'm not going to support approving this thing. I'm personally getting tired of these bizarre interpretations of the Brown Act and wasting our time on this stuff, and I appreciate what the city attorney's doing here, and that I'm just not going to support it.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Petros.
I, too, will not be supporting the motion. I believe that good public policy is open government, but I do not believe that we are acting or should act in the opinions and pressure on a belief of the Brown Act, but on the letter of the law, whether it be this body or other committees, I, too, am getting, I won't be supporting the motion.
Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to add that, you know, I've reviewed the situation, and there's no actionable violation of the Brown Act here. This is just ridiculous.
Well, I would agree with you that it is ridiculous, and that is a complete waste of time and a complete waste of taxpayers' money. What I think the motion is designed to do is prevent the further waste of money by enabling us to immunize ourselves on an issue for which there may be people in the community who will want to seize on this as a means of stopping a bigger policy initiative, which is why I believe it would be appropriate to pass it. I will move the item.
I'll second.
And, but I share with you the frustration that comes week after week of listening to mindless and needless complaints and imaginary allegations of violations, when in fact, what we're dealing with is the claim that we didn't read this line off of the agenda that's published and sent out citywide and posted on the wall out there before we went in the meeting, meeting in orally. Seeing no further discussion, please vote.
Mayor Curry, your vote didn't go through, please. With councilmembers Petros and Selich voting no, the motion carries four-two.
Okay. Is there a motion for reconsideration?
A motion to reconsider the vote on any action taken by the city council. Either this meeting or the previous meeting may be made only by one of the council members who voted with the prevailing side.
Motion for reconsideration. Seeing none, we have an adjournment tonight. I am saddened to adjourn tonight's meeting in honor of Pastor Chuck Smith. Calvary Chapel founder Pastor Chuck Smith passed away on October 3rd at his Newport Beach home. Chuck was born in Ventura in 1927. He graduated from Life Bible College and was ordained as a pastor in 1948. He taught and led various Southern California churches until becoming pastor of Calvary Chapel in Costa Mesa in 1965. At the time, the church had about 25 members. The congregation grew under Smith's straightforward Bible teaching, relaxed style, and an open-door policy that welcomed everyone without judgment, including hippies, drug addicts, and surfers. By the 1970s, Calvary Chapel was at the hub of the Jesus People Movement, and over the years, thousands have been baptized at Pirate's Cove in Corona del Mar. Today, Calvary Chapel Costa Mesa is attended by about 8,000 members each week. It's just one of the now approximately 1,000 Calvary Chapel churches nationwide, and there are hundreds more overseas. Under Smith's leadership, Calvary launched Marin Athi Music Corporation, The Word for Today Radio and Publishing Ministry, and a nationwide radio network that includes K-Wave here in Southern California. The LA Times referred to Smith as one of the most influential figures in modern American Christianity, and there is no question that Pastor Chuck had a profound influence on the tens of thousands who came through his church, including me. Smith is survived by his wife Kay, four children, Chuck Jr., Jeff, Jeanette, and Cheryl, and his grandchildren. We stand adjourned.